The City Council Committee on Finance will now be called to order, Madam Clerk.
Councillor Cadiz?
Here.
Joseph Camaro?
Here.
Stephen Camaro?
Kilby?
Here.
Lalabie LeBeau?
Yes.
Long? Pelletier?
Yes.
Viveras?
Here.
President Ponte?
Here. I just want to let everybody know that Councilor Long is under the weather. He won't be joining us tonight. Should be back to normal business at our next council meeting. Should he be feeling better. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. First item on our agenda, citizens' input. Nobody signed up for citizens' input. Next item on our agenda is a transfer and appropriation. That's item five on full council. It's a transfer and appropriation of $160,000 for Morton Middle School inactive fund to the Maplewood Park acquisition.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Just this evening, I did provide you with some additional information on this. I know that most councils are familiar with the fact that these lots have been available for some time now. The Maplewood Park folks are excited to be able to add to the open space in that vicinity. What I delivered to you this evening was a plot plan that shows in color the two lots in question. And also, we did have appraisals done, or I should say, People Incorporated, the owners of the property, had appraisals done. Those appraised values came in at $95,000 per lot. They have agreed to sell those to the City of Fall River for $80,000 per lot. Hence, the transfer before you to provide the funding to complete that transaction.
Madam City Administrator, is there any real estate commission involved in this transaction? For my own information, there's no real estate agent representing me?
I'm not aware of one, Mr. President, because we are dealing directly with People Incorporated.
You're dealing with People Inc., correct. Thank you. Councilman, seat seven, Councilor Pelletier?
Thank you. You know, this has been going on for quite a while, that the Maplewood Association tried to get most of the property back up there. And they did utilize three lots, and there's two left. I think it's high time that we come up. I guess we can get the money. And it's in place. I would like to see it. I don't think it has to go to Real Estate Committee again, but tonight, you know, I'd like to see it wrapped up. If we can get the money, is it a go if we vote for the money tonight?
Yes, councillor. Actually, they had an offer from another prospective purchaser and did reach out to the City of Fall River because they knew that we had an interest in those lots. So your vote this evening is important to allow them to move forward, and they have decided to reserve those two lots pending a decision by the City Council to purchase to add it to the park property. So, yes, it's ready to move forward, councillor, with your vote.
Yeah, well, I'm hoping today that my colleagues do support this. It's been some time that it's just hanging there and nothing's happening. It's gonna go back as a park, as it should be. And I think the rest of the land should've went, but that's not the case. They've got three buildings up there. We're gonna take a little spot back for the park, and I think that's the way that it should be done. So I'm hoping anybody, everybody can support this tonight. And that's in it to any committee. Let's wrap it up and finish this deal. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor, on seat one. Councillor Cadiz?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you, I just wanted to be noted that, again, we got information on this purchase of the property tonight before the meeting. Last time that I requested, yeah, Jesus, right. Has nothing to do with Jesus, but that's okay. Last time I requested something, well in advance of a meeting, the mayor came down, stormed down, and said that we didn't have enough time. But again, the City Council is receiving information for the first time and is expected to make a determination immediately tonight. I mean, I just, I got issue with that. You know, we get things in our packets, half information. I mean, all I had in the packet was that we were making a transfer of $160,000. I wasn't really sure what it was for. But I do have some questions. The two lots that we're looking to purchase, what exactly are we gonna be doing? And I guess, can I take a step back? I tried to go back to when I was looking for more information, trying to go back to the park board to see if there was any discussion of this purchase. I wasn't able to see anything. Has there been discussion with the parks department, or, I mean, the park board?
Not regarding the transaction, councillor. It's the City Council that has to authorize the purchase of lots.
No, I recognize that. I was just trying to figure out if there was any discussion about the strategy, the intent of it, what the need was. I mean, this is a, this is a corner lot. What exactly are we gonna be utilizing that?
It's gonna remain open space, councillor.
Right, but are we gonna do just a corner lot, just grass? I mean...
Again, that would be a decision of the park board. I would anticipate, again, additional open space. It'll be grassed area.
I think originally, when we had this conversation, we were looking to get the entire parcel back.
That's correct.
From the diocese that we obviously gave in and tried to include in part of the park. But in terms of $160,000, I'm just trying to figure out, I mean, is it, it's a corner lot? I mean, I don't anticipate that we're gonna put any type of playgrounds there, I mean, because it's a corner lot. So I don't know that, is this really the best use of $160,000? You know, it's, it's outside when we're looking at Maplewood Park. I mean, it's not really, I mean, it's just, it's a corner. I don't know that it adds any significant assets or value to Maplewood Park. So I guess I question that, that piece.
Well, councillor, again, this was something, as your colleague in seat seven mentioned, that the Maplewood Park Association has been very anxious to try to increase the footprint of the park area. It does get a lot of use. They felt that it would add to the visibility, you know, approaching the park. And there was never, that I'm aware, any intention to actually use it for any structures or other than just to add to the open space. And that's my understanding. But clearly, it would be up to the park board if they decided to construct something on the parcels or move forward with them. But the intent was always to just increase the footprint of the open space in that neighborhood.
Yep. And I'm gonna sound like a broken record, just in terms of the transfer. Again, we're looking to utilize some, some of our capital funds that are, that are not being utilized. And again, I've always made the statement that we should be utilizing and transferring for like projects. So I think taking monies from the school department building projects, and granted, it's city bonding, was a city project, I think the intent of that debt service was for the school department and building needs. And when I just went to look at the inactive accounts, I noticed that there's potentially $100,000 when we start looking at park improvements. So we have $6,200 for park improvements at Lafayette and Maplewood. We have $397 in the Highland and Kennedy Park account. We've got $53,000 in the city park repairs. We've got another $40,000 in the Thomas Chu Park, which comes out to $100,000. So I don't, I'm not quite sure why we wouldn't utilize those funds and make that transfer. We're about $60,000 short according to what you're proposing to transfer if the council does approve it. From my standpoint, you know, we're taking it from an account, when I look at the inactive accounts for the school department or school department projects, there's roughly $373,000 in inactive monies. We've seen the school department go before CPC to try to get windows for the ad building. I know they got CPC monies for the roof, the handicap parts, parking spot there. You know, they've got boiler issues, they've got chiller unit issues that they've been talking about. They've got issues over at the Sylvia School with projected, trying to get a second means of egress. They're trying to do that at the Henry Lord. I know they have an issue with the boilers at the Henry Lord. So we've got a lot of capital projects that I think that we're ignoring. And I, quite frankly, I didn't have access to the capital improvement plan that was done by the Collins Center to actually look at all their other projects that we could be utilizing, this inactive funds. I know we went through the entire, Collins Center came down, did an inventory and a walkthrough of all our buildings to identify some capital improvement plans. I know they came back to us with a plan as to, okay, these are the projects that should be utilized within our operating budget. These are the projects that we should go out and bond for, things of that nature. So I think we should be a little bit more cognizant of that and actually be utilizing these monies to help offset some of those capital item needs for the building repairs. Again, I don't, I don't think that we should be taking $160,000 from a, from a school building fund to make that transfer. That's just me as one councillor, and, I mean, I've said this before, it's, it's not anything that I haven't said in the past. But with that, I yield.
Thank you, councillor. Mrs. Viveras, if you can indicate to the council and the community, maybe to the councils who weren't here, the history on this Maplewood Park land in itself. My memory serves me correctly, this was owned by the city at one point, sold it to the diocese for $1. Can you indicate this, this track record and this history on this for the council and the community, please?
Well, you've, you've done a good job up to this point, Mr. President. You're correct. It was previously owned by the city. The city deeded it over to the church for their purposes. The city did try to get it back from the diocese at a comparable price. We were unsuccessful at that. And I know some of your colleagues probably recall the details on that. But we did attempt to get all of the lots in question back from the diocese. That was not something that they were willing to do. And then they went ahead, and we didn't have the funding to purchase all of the lots at the time. And so People Incorporated went ahead and purchased those lots. So People Incorporated determined that there were two lots that they did not have any use for, and they knew that the city was interested, and so they offered to sell them to, to the City of Fall River. But you raise a good point, Mr. President. I mean, these lots have been identified by the city, and specifically, the Maplewood Neighborhood Association is something that they would like to have, to add to the park properties. And this is, discussion has been going on for several years now. So given the fact that People Incorporated was about to transfer the ownership yet again, they came to the city recently and, and made one additional offer to sell them to the city. And we wanted to take advantage of that offer. But it, it was because People Incorporated was prepared to sell the balance of the lots, and so we felt we needed to take action at this time.
Okay, 'cause there were, just point of information, there were eight Form A lots here. There are some homes that are being built. If you could educate the council and the community a little bit on what these other lots, because the original transfer had eight Form A lots on here. They're giving away lots, seven, the lots on Stafford Road and, was it a corner, Stafford Road in Chicago, which don't appeal to be good Form A, single-family lots. So the appraisal value, was that analyzed, being as it doesn't conform as the other lots?
It did, Mr. President. And in fact, I don't have the full appraisals on the other lots with me, but I did review them today. And the other lots along Chicago Street were appraised at $100,000. These two actually just came in slightly less, at $95,000. The offer that People Incorporated has from a prospective purchaser was to buy all of the lots at $80,000 each. And so consequently, the city wanted to take advantage of those two. But you're correct, they, they did appraise slightly higher for those other lots along Chicago Street that have perhaps, you know, better dimensions.
Well, those lots hold much more value, of course. Councilman, seat two, Councilor Camaro?
I just wanna clarify, do you have the dates of when the city gave those lots for a dollar to the diocese?
Honestly, councillor, I would have to check. It was...
Was it something that happened within the last 30 years?
No, it was a very long time ago, I think.
1952, so...
All right, that would make sense, because prior to the construction of the church and the, yeah, the other structures.
And People's Inc. bought it off the diocese, maybe five, four years ago. So it's not like something that the city turned over quickly and they capitalized and sold it.
No.
They had it for quite some time.
That's correct, councillor. Yeah, the church had it for quite some time, and then we, when they closed the structures, we opted to try to purchase from them. And again, we were hoping for a return of the land at a comparable value, but the diocese was not interested in doing that, so...
Noted, thank you. Councillor in seat four, Councilor Kilby?
Mr. President, you ask most of my questions, just a couple away from Mr. Viveras. So $160 is the purchase price that we're offering. So could you, once again, what did People Incorporated get an offer from a private developer? What was the total amount?
They offered $80,000 for all of the remaining lots.
What's the total?
I think it was five, five lots in total.
Oh, okay.
Or, yes, yes. There were five lots remaining. He offered, he, she offered $80,000 for each of the five lots. And so the offer was extended to the city to purchase those two lots for $80,000.
What, what did People Incorporated pay the diocese, you know?
I, I don't know that off the top of my head. I'm sure it's a public record, councillor, but I don't have that information.
Okay, well, this has been around for a long time. When I was, my prior stint on the council, I mean, we made an effort to try to acquire the property, sending letters to Attorney...
Gay, I think it was Attorney Gay with the diocese.
So we did make a good faith effort to try to get it back. Unfortunately, we couldn't. And I know there's a great deal of, how many of Butters surround the property? Because I know they have an interest in seeing that preserved as, as open space as well.
Yeah, I don't have that information right before me, councillor.
Well, I do recall from my memory, it's, it's important to the, a lot of the residential homeless in that area to preserve, to preserve the, and the issues we have with, with parking many times around the baseball field. So it's something else to talk, and, you know, I'm glad we were able to acquire the land, so. I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor in seat five, Council Vice President LeBeau?
Thank you. Mrs. Viveras, we haven't, there's been no conversation with the park department on acquiring this land?
Not recently, councillor. We weren't even sure we were gonna be able to purchase, so, because the council needed to appropriate the funds to do that. But once we acquire, they become, you know, they will be placed under the control of the park board, and then it'll be their decision. Based on the location, as you can tell, and the other amenities that are included with the park, it was everyone's expectation, at least to this point, that they would remain open space.
It just, from my point of view, it seems backwards. I know this has been going on for a long time, but it seems odd that we would spend the $160,000 and then go and talk to the park department about it if they're going to be taking this over and included with Maplewood Park, which I don't have a problem with. I would just feel more comfortable if they were included in the conversation first, what they're gonna do with it, if it, you know, there's obviously gonna be a cost to do something here. I haven't been by it, I don't know if it's a jerk, if it's what it is, but there's gonna be a cost on top of the $160,000, which would then, at that point, come out of the park department budget. There would be something we need to think of. I would prefer that there was a conversation with the park department first, the director or the board, just so that they know what's going on before we spend money, and then we've got two lots sitting there growing weeds for, you know...
It's kind of an interesting dynamic, councillor, as you can appreciate. Clearly, the park board is aware that we have been trying to acquire these lots, as your colleagues have mentioned, for quite some time. So there's never been a problem raised regarding the acquisition of those additional lots. But we, we felt, and we didn't have a lot of time, because again, they do have a buyer that's interested in all of the lots, so we wanted to move ahead expeditiously. But also, we didn't really want to approach the park department if we didn't have the funding to go ahead and actually purchase the lot. So, and we felt that we wanted to give, you know, the courtesy to the council to get your approval prior to moving forward. If the council wanted to approve the transfer subject to the park board's approval, we could certainly go back to them. But I didn't really want to have the conversation with the park board prior to the City Council voting approval for the funding that would be necessary to buy the lots.
All right, maybe just a conversation in the real estate committee. It doesn't have to be drawn out, but it, it just seems like the conversation should happen, especially when, you know, we have a park department that, you know, is tight on, on their manpower and their resources, certainly. And the other thing I just find interesting, I'm glad that councillor in seat two mentioned that, that was sold for a dollar. Was it all eight lots sold for a dollar at that time, 50 years ago?
At the time, the city deeded over all of the parcels, yes, it was virtually for no money, councillor.
And then they turned it over, or they sold it, to another nonprofit in the city. And then that nonprofit, who is wonderful, but doesn't have any kind of a pilot with us, is now going to sell it back to us. Just seems like the city loses three different times there. I, I would prefer that this went to the real estate committee for a quick conversation with the, the park department. There's gonna be expense, taking over these lots, and what they're gonna do with it. I would hate to see us transfer any money and then it just sit there and do nothing. I appreciate the neighborhood, or, or the Butters want it for open space. I have no problem with that at all, but before we spend the money and then we have no money for upkeep or, or anything like that, it, it just would make sense to me.
That could certainly be an option, councillor. I mean, I would, I would suggest respectfully that if you wanted to approve it subject to the approval of the park board, then at least we can keep the process moving forward. I'm concerned that if there seems that the funds might not be available for the purchase, that, again, People Incorporated does have another alternative, so... And again, this was just recently brought to our attention, that, you know, they had the offer to purchase the additional lots. And I think it would be subject to the park board, so whether that conversation happens in City Council Real Estate Committee or before the park board, I think we could certainly, you know, try to expedite that as well. But we'll certainly defer to the council's wishes on that.
Thank you. I yield.
Mrs. Viveras, has there been an offer to purchase or purchase and sales agreement that has been executed or negotiated on this matter?
Not between the city and People Incorporated, because again, we felt that the council needed to move forward, appropriate the funds, and effectively authorize us to, to enter into an agreement to purchase.
Okay, so the $80,000 number that you've been communicating with People Inc. has just been a verbal communication to?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. Councillor in seat three, Councilor Camaro?
And that segues to my question, has there been any negotiation on the price? And when People Incorporated came to you, did they basically say, this is our only offer, purchasing each lot at $80,000? Did the city come back with a counter offer? Is there any, any negotiations?
There was a, I don't know if I have it with me, councillor, there was a communication, actually through Mr. Dion, so I'm not sure how they approached him. But originally, there was a suggestion that we would purchase the lots for $85,000 each. And then there was a conversation with another representative from People Incorporated who determined that they would accept $80,000. So there has been some reduction in communication, but it has all been verbal for the most part.
Okay, and of the other lots, I see what appears to be some names on some of them. Are any of those lots still being held by People Incorporated for any development? I know at one point, they were talking about building a group home for some of their residents.
Yeah, I couldn't be certain, councillor. I will tell you that they are planning to use the proceeds for another project, but that's, that's all I'm aware of.
Okay. I wonder if, Mr. President, I know representatives from the Neighborhood Association are here. I wonder if they have any information. Could we ask them? Join us at the table?
Sure, I'd be okay with that. Is anybody from the Neighborhood Association here that wants to speak on this item? I'll invite you to the table.
No, come to the table.
No, no, come to the table, please.
So my, my question, Mr. Gardett, is, is there any development along Chicago Street of any of those lots by People Incorporated?
The, the group home is already built. And Ronnie, the second home is, is in the process of being built now. And so that, actually, they've already utilized the land that they're going to use.
So they're not looking to build on any of the additional lots? Those are all gonna be privately developed?
Well, I understand that they want to build two more private homes. And, I mean, they're negotiating, it's nothing, you know, the Maple, Neighborhood Association has not been associated with it. This has been just going on for, I guess, the past five or six years, that we've been trying to actually expand so that you would have Maplewood Park. The entire frontage of Stafford Road would be park instead of having homes or professional buildings. That's why we were only interested actually into trying to acquire the two lots that they've offered to us now.
I believe there's an agreement in place, Mrs. Viveras, you might know, between People Inc. and Diamond, that Diamond builds one school per year on, on some of the remaining lots. Are you aware of that?
Yes, yes. They've, I think there's, actually, they might be building two buildings, and perhaps they're building, give the veterans preference, as they've done before. The one that they built across the street, they were given the veterans' preference, but no veterans actually applied, so it went to a civilian purchase.
So the Neighborhood Association is in support of the city purchasing these two lots that face Stafford?
I could say that 100%. We've been trying to do this for the past, maybe six or seven years. We've been trying to acquire these lands, these lots.
Well, as you know, I, I've attended several of Neighborhood, Neighborhood Association meetings, and I tend to be supportive of Neighborhood Associations, having been involved with them for many decades. So I'm prepared to support this matter on behalf of the Maplewood Neighborhood Association. I'd like to see us act on it tonight. And with that, I yield.
Thank you, councillor.
And for the Maplewood Association, I'd like to thank you personally, councillor.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Great. Councilman, seat one, Councilor Cadiz?
Thank you. So the other three lots that are highlighted, those are not, those are under agreement already, or?
They, they have an offer, councillor. I can't specifically say whether they have a signed purchase. I'm told that they were, there was an offer to purchase the remaining five lots for the $80,000 per lot, and they made one last effort to approach the city, probably at the encouragement of the Neighborhood Association, to, to allow the city to purchase the two on the corner.
So can we just go back and ask them if there's, they're willing to sell lots one through five? I mean, that, to me, makes more sense. I don't, I don't know that $160,000 for two lots that are gonna be the front of Stafford Road makes, makes a whole lot of sense, from, from my standpoint, especially if it's just gonna be there. I mean, it's not like it's prime real estate, it's gonna be utilized by the park, it's just gonna be a corner lot that you're gonna be able to see when you're driving by. I mean, to me, I think it's a little short sight to spend $160,000. I understand what the neighborhood wants. I understand that they don't want to see the development along Chicago Street. I've recognized that. But again, at the end of the day, you get, we have to do a cost-benefit analysis, and we're not really getting anything from... we're not really getting anything from that. There's no real benefit to the city for that parcel of land, other than to say that we just got, you know, two lots on the corner of Chicago Street from Maplewood that really is not going to be utilized by anybody. I mean, it's going to be, we say open space, but a cut through to get to the park, I don't, like, what would you do on that, those two lots?
Well, again, it would improve the access from, depending on where you're coming from, but also, again, open space. I think Mr. Gordat summed it up very well to say they want the visual.
When you say improve the access, you mean walking access or driving access? What do we mean by access? And if it's driving access, I don't know that you would want to have access on a corner of Chicago Street in Stafford Road.
Mr. Gordat would like to respond, Councilor.
I recognize that, but I want the, I want the city and the administration to answer my questions first, and then Mr. Gordat.
Okay, certainly.
Originally, we wanted to put a walking path in from Stafford Road right down the area. We still think of that. The Maplewood Association would like also, we have voted that Maplewood Association will pay to put a sign on Albert Street and on Chicago Street showing that it's Maplewood Park. Actually, there's no signs there at all. People have thought enough to put a nice $250,000 playground in Maplewood Park. Maplewood Park, for years, has been falling behind. We've been trying to bring it up, and we have already voted that we will appropriate and we will pay, Maplewood Association will pay for the signs on Albert Street and on Chicago Street to show the people of Fall River just where Maplewood Park is.
With all due respect, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate the Maplewood Association trying to provide money, but that's the responsibility of the city. The city, the city has money to expend in the budget for the maintenance of their parks. I just went through, we've got $100,000 sitting in vacant accounts for park renovations, okay, that are not being utilized. So for me, to then go to a Neighborhood Association and take money for signs that we should be putting up to identify Maplewood Park, and I agree with you, not just Maplewood Park, but all our other parks have not been kept to the standards that they should have been kept. I made this argument when we were dealing with the budget. When you look at the amount of parks that we have and the expenses, the expense budget that the park department gets, it came out to like $2,000 per park. It's really ridiculous when we start looking at this. So, again, I know there are councils that are going to support this because they want to support the neighborhood, but I think from my standpoint, $160,000 is a lot of money. It's for two lots that are on the corner. I don't know that we gain any real benefit from having those two in terms of access or visibility or signage or any, anything, but, I mean, if it's, if it's the will of this council, they will appropriate it. My other question is, why are we going to utilize the funds that we have in our building accounts when we can go to CPC? Like, to me, open space projects are prime projects for the CPC. CPC has, the CPC, you know, provides funding for open space, so why haven't we tapped into CPC for that?
I think it was, in this particular case, Council, was a timing issue. The CPC, as you know, the projects have to be submitted by September 1 in order to be considered in that round. You have the roof before you tonight, but that's an emergency project. This wouldn't qualify as an emergency.
And I'll, I'll talk to that. I think that, I disagree with the use of CPC for that money.
Okay.
That's just, that's the opposite of what we should be doing.
But I'm just suggesting that it didn't qualify, the timing didn't allow for CPC consideration for that.
Councilor, could I give you the, actually, the history? Probably about six years ago, many of you city councils were not sitting here, but some of you were, the United States government had asserted that Maplewood Park was in the low-income area, and we had the funding to pay for Maplewood Park, and we had the funding to pay for that land. But the city council delayed and referred and went to another group. And while the city council was delaying the purchase, the United States government came in and reevaluated the area, and they put Maplewood Park in the high-income area. Five or six years ago, this land would have been in Maplewood Park if the sitting city council at that time hadn't delayed it.
I wasn't, I wasn't part of the.
As I said, Council, I'm just giving you the history.
Thank you. I appreciate that, but I just want to correct the history because I wasn't part of the city council, but that's, that's absolutely inaccurate. The city council did appropriate, because I was the city administrator, the use of free cash to purchase the entire land. There was negotiations that we're going through with, you know, obviously Attorney Gay from Taunton, who represents the diocese. We were going back and forth. So it wasn't the city council that, you know, delayed that project in itself. So for whatever reason, that fell through. But at the point, it made sense to purchase the entire parcel so that the entire parcel wasn't developed, so that we can open it up for true open space, utilize it for much-needed parking, which is needed in that, in that area. I mean, you're not going to get parking over here because it's on the corner. I mean, it's just going to create traffic issues and accidents. I mean, I don't know that any traffic study would even indicate that that makes any sense to have a parking lot there. Again, I'm just trying to figure out when the, when the administration goes through and decides to come down to the city council for $160,000 appropriation, how did you identify that $160,000 was worth the purchase of this outside of the appraisal? I know what, I know what the land is appraised and valued at, I mean, but that's for somebody to buy this and build a home. I recognize that. But for us to get it from an administrative standpoint, to look at it and just let it sit there and just have, like, how did, how did we come up with, what was the logic behind it?
Well, as I explained, Councilor, we, these, these lots or any portion thereof was something that the Maplewood Association, as well as former councils administrations, have wanted to acquire. The People Incorporated received an offer from someone recently to buy all five lots, and they knew that the city was particularly interested, again, in those two for the reasons that Mr. Gordat very appropriately articulated. And so that was the decision to, you know, come to the council for the funding to do that. So we're, I mean, you are creating an open space all along Stafford Road that they would be able to put their sign up there, and it does increase the footprint of the park. I don't know, actually, what happened. You're right, you were involved initially. I can remember that there was a substantial amount of money put in an acquisition account, but we could never reach, reach agreement with the diocese regarding that purchase. So we tried, and it, and it just didn't happen.
And I'm not trying to blame anybody. I just want to correct it because I don't, I don't think it was fair to blame the then council that was there because they appropriated the money, so. But I, but I guess, so I want to ask my question in a different way because I don't know that I'm getting the answer that I'm looking for. I mean, we got $160,000. We've got priorities in all facets of our departments, right? I mean, if we just look at, if you look, if you're looking to spend $160,000 on the park department, I mean, we've got sidewalks within our parks that need to be maintained, that need to be repaired, I mean, that costing millions and millions of dollars. We've got playgrounds that need to be updated. I mean, the list goes on and on and on, you know, equipment that the parks department needs, things of that nature. I mean, we've got Maplewood Park that is paying for nets to go up. We've got the Highland Park where that Little League field team has to pay for renovations and lights. And, I mean, we're charging everybody for everything when they're our parks and we're not maintaining our parks. And then we come here to the city council and say, let's appropriate $160,000 to buy two lots on the corner of Chicago Street and Stafford Street, and we'll call it open space, and we'll put $160,000 welcome to Maplewood Park sign up. To me, I don't know that that's the most strategic thing to do, and I don't know that that's at the top of our priority. And I agree with Councilor, you know, Madam Vice President, that I think there should have, should have been some, at least some discussion with the park board to, number one, say, okay, what are our priorities? Is this a priority? Do we want to, or do we recommend, not only to the administration, but to the city council, to spend $160,000 on these two lots? Or does it make more sense to try to go back to People Incorporated? I mean, if, I don't know why we wouldn't, if we wanted to buy, I don't know why we wouldn't be calling People Incorporated and asking to purchase these lots and just negotiate all the lots that were available. We wait until after the lots are all sold, and maybe they can't sell those two lots because they're on the corner of Chicago Street and Stafford Road, so you're probably not going to get a whole lot of people that are interested in purchasing that lot or in front of Stafford Road because of the amount, the amount of traffic on Stafford Road. So from a marketing standpoint, it makes more sense to give, call up the city, and we'll get $160,000 from the city? I don't know. I mean, these are my concerns that I have, and that's just me as one counselor. But with that, I yield.
Councilor in seat seven.
Thank you. You know, for many years, we owned it. We sold it for a dollar, all well and good. We got a chance to get it back. Do we let it go to somebody else? I mean, you know, they're waiting for the city to do something. And do we want to sell it to somebody else that's going to put maybe two more houses on the corner? You know, you can save that piece. You talk about it's going to cost a lot of money. It doesn't cost much money to cut the grass. You know, it's, it's not a big, big piece, but it's a piece that we can save, a piece of the park that we owned 50, 60 years ago. And I think, I visualize that corner with a few seats here and there, a couple of trees here and there, and if you don't want to go inside of the park, you can sit up there, have a little picnic, watch the cars go by, whatever the case may be. I think the money is well worth it. If we don't buy it, somebody else is going to buy it, somebody else is going to build on it, and I think the views of the park, once you get two more houses there, it's going to be lousy. I say we should buy it and just turn it into the park like it should be. And I'm hoping, but if it doesn't work out, this thing's been kicking around long enough. It's either we do it or let somebody else buy it and let them put up what they want. Let's save that piece of the park. I yield. Thank you.
Councilor in seat five.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. A couple of things I wanted to talk about with this. I didn't intend to speak, but some, some conversations kind of geared towards where we're going and the direction we're going with this. First off, I want to just make a comment with respect to Maplewood Park. And Mrs. Sahadi, and I know a couple of other councils have been here a little longer than I have, can remember back in the day under the Bob Correre administration, due to the nine C cuts, the city turned the lights and taking, and paying for the lights for Babe Ruth and Little League baseball fields over to the local Little Leagues or the Babe Ruth Leagues to pay for. I personally believe, and this is going to be something I'm going to be speaking about going into the budget deliberations this year, is that I think that the city should be taking on the costs for these lights in these parks because there's not a lot of Babe Ruth or Little League baseball going on with the lights. I know Maplewood Park has grown tremendously. I know they have a couple, they, both their Little League fields have lights, I believe, and their Babe Ruth field has lights, but it's a discussion that I think we should have because this burden is continuously placed on these leagues, who are already having a hard enough time making ends meet and have to continue to fundraise. And I've heard from numerous presidents, especially the Maplewood Park individuals and the Kennedy Park individuals, that this burden is placed on them when we're essentially in this situation. And I'm not saying I disagree with this transfer. I'm saying that we're going to be spending $160,000 to purchase land, and we're still putting the cost on our Little Leagues to pay for the lights. In addition to that, on Halloween, they're all lit up, make sure that our parks are safe. So this is going to be a discussion that we could have at a later date because I feel pretty passionate about placing that burden on our leagues, who are already struggling enough. On another note, speaking of these lots in and itself, initially, how it's shown us in this, in these engineering plans, that there are eight buildable Form A lots here. They all, in my opinion, based on my understanding of the zoning, all meet the frontage and the square footage to build homes. I understand that the three lots on Chicago Street, which in my opinion, hold much more value than the house, than the lots on Stafford Road, I believe there should be, now, before I answer, ask that question, did you say, Mrs. Viveras, that the one, two, three, four, five lots that are remaining, there is a current offer on the table for $80,000 from another developer who wants to purchase all five, all five, five lots?
That's, we have been informed, yes.
Okay, so then they called you or however that happened, and they say, hey, do you want to buy it for $80,000? Correct?
People Incorporated.
People Incorporated said, hey, would you like to buy? Okay. So in my opinion, a developer, because that's most likely, I bet you my last dollar, that a developer or a local builder is going to be probably purchasing, wanting to purchase these five lots, and they want to build very single, very simple, single-family homes. It probably costs them about, probably $110. My colleague in seat two is much more better equipped to answer these questions than I am, but probably $110, maybe to $120,000 to build a colonial, not, a very basic vanilla colonial. They're going to be buying it for $110, or they're going to be building it for $110, they're going to be into the lot for, let's say, $80,000, pay a real estate commission. They're going to be looking around a $65,000, $64,000 profit if they purchase a lot that already has utilities going to it. They don't have to do any road infrastructure, they don't have to bring any lights, and so it's, it's a good deal for a local builder who is going to be able to buy these lots. However, if I'm this builder, and I'm not in the position of being a builder, but if I'm the builder here, I have much more value on the lots of Chicago Street than I do Stafford Road because they're going to have a resale issue selling a single-family lot on Stafford Road with much more traffic, whereas Chicago Street is a one-way street and it's much more quiet. So I personally think, and I want to make a note, I'm in favor of seeing something be done with, with this lot, but I think there needs to be a little bit more stringent, I think, of a negotiation to be had and say, look, I understand that there's an appraisal, a subjective opinion of an appraisal for $91,000 or $95,000, but at the end of the day, we're still talking about value of a lot that should be adjusted, in my opinion. If you're giving value for three other lots that are in a better location with less heavy traffic, are we making any kind of adjustments for the location being on as busy of a street as we are on Stafford Road? So, do you see where I'm going with this?
Yeah, absolutely, Council. And as I said earlier, that the lots on Chicago were assessed slightly higher. They came in at $100,000 versus the 95. I mean, Council, you, you make excellent points. I guess my only comment is, is that a developer obviously came along and said, I'll give you $80,000 for all five lots. And if that developer were buying them individually, they, maybe they would be different offers, but that was the offer that we were told on the table, and they were all priced at the same amount. We felt that because the 80 was less than the 95 appraised value, that it was not unreasonable as, as a price. I don't know if those two lots come out of the equation, if the offer changes. We can't really speak to that because that's something being done, you know, between People Incorporated and the other prospective purchasers.
Who ordered these appraisals?
People Incorporated.
People Incorporated, and they just gave you a, which is fine. They gave you a copy of the appraisal?
Yes.
Okay. So from, just so, so you understand my perspective on this. From a developer's standpoint, if they have eight lot, or they have five lots, or six lots, rather, and there's a profit of $60,000 per lot after the homes are built, it's a $300,000 profit, I think that there is adjustments that a potential builder would be giving to the other lots. So you might be getting a little bit more money on Chicago Street, and you might be getting a little less money on Stafford Road. From the developer's standpoint, for the value on this, I think a developer who's purchasing this will make his own adjustments. Being as we are given two additional lots that don't hold as much value as what's just going under contract for, for $80,000 on the other three lots, I think there needs to be some kind of an adjustment or appropriation given due to the fact that it is going to be empty space. And I, you know, I've had conversations with, I believe, my colleague in seat one when he was council president. I said, I think this community deserves a pretty, I envision maybe a memorial for fallen heroes or, or those who have been lost in the line of duty. That'd be a great spot for it. I think, I mean, I know we have some in the city, but I think that would make a great place in our South End for people to go to. I envision something there, not homes, like my colleague in seat seven's indicating. I don't want to see two-boxed Colonials there. I remember that building when I was a kid. It used to be a brick building. It used to be, I'm sure, Councilor in seat seven, give plenty of chow mein sandwiches away in that building. But I'm just saying that the opportunity for our community to purchase this needs to be looked at in a way that adjustments are given for the locational issues that we are essentially, doesn't make a difference to us, but since we are going to be purchasing the lots for what a developer's purchasing it for, I think we need to just give a little bit more thought to it. So I'm in favor of doing this, but I think this either needs to be tabled at this time, I'm sorry to say this, or refer back to the real estate committee so that a purchase and sales agreement could be at least drafted. There could be additional discussions on negotiations of value for the lots, taking into consideration the locational deficiencies or lack thereof. And I think that we should have our ducks in a little bit more of a row, and then it'll give you time, or maybe the park board can come meet with the real estate committee and kind of discuss what their plans would be for that.
And Councilor, I mean, you made some valid points regarding the values of the lots, but I, I think where we're at right now is we could consider trying to negotiate the price downward. If I'm understanding, you're thinking that these lots probably don't have the same value and maybe should be sold at a lesser amount. But the reality is, People Incorporated, and I'm only going on base what was represented to us, they have offers, an offer, to purchase each of those lots at $80,000. to purchase each of those lots at $80,000. So I'm failing to see what their incentive would be to negotiate a lesser price with us when they have someone that's saying, I'll give you $80,000 for each of those two lots. I'm not suggesting, I understand your point, but I'm just concerned. And I guess, and we can certainly, if the council's decision is to refer it, I mean, I'm not in any way suggesting to you that the two weeks of additional time might end the negotiation. So I'm not in any way, you know, threatening that the timing could be a problem for us. I don't know if it would be, but I suggest we could probably get past that piece of it.
Well, what you could do, which I know it's been done in the past and Corporation Council's here as well, and I'm not asking to speak on this, but I'm just saying, nothing is stopping you as city administrator of going into an offer discussion with a due diligence phase.
Correct.
And that due diligence phase could be 14 days, could be 21 days, it could be three months. If you want to agree, which you have every right as city administrator, I believe, to agree to the purchase, subject to the city council's approval, nothing's stopping you from going under contract for $80,000 for both of the lots with a due diligence period. So you will be able to, A, draft a contract. The Real Estate Committee can meet. We can have a perspective from the Park Board. You can order your own opinion of value or appraisal to make sure we're not overpaying for this property. And we could have this discussion again. So you could essentially bind this contract, go under contract with them, and do additional due diligence, not an unrealistic expectation from the city's point of view.
No, Mr. President, and again, now that we've had this public discussion and you're well aware of what activities I would be engaging in, I'd be happy to do that. All I'm suggesting to you is that ultimately, People Incorporated has represented that they have the offer to purchase the two lots at $80,000 each. So I'm just suggesting to you that the level of negotiation that can actually transpire might be very difficult given the fact that they have, you know, $80,000 offers on the table for those two lots. So that was my only point.
And I respect that. I just think there's nothing stopping you. If you're saying, look, the city has their, is in the corner here and it's the will of the Maplewood Park Association as well as other people to lock this up and envision open space or make that park a little bit better, fine. But nothing, I don't believe, is stopping you from doing that. This isn't in any way, shape, or form comparable to what we were trying to do three years ago across the street from government center. That's a completely different animal. When a contract was signed, it was verbally discussed, and then it came to the city council. I know councils at the time squealed and complained because you did it without speaking to us. I think we had an open forum here. I think councilors have given their opinion. I personally would like, I don't have an issue with you going under contract with a due diligence phase and the city council will have final, final say into what you've been able to negotiate through your due diligence process. And you have the capable individuals within your administration who will be able to do that. And then I'd also start, like to start having the discussion about how Maplewood Park, Little Leagues, and our little other baseball league shouldn't be paying for the lights come the summer month. So I respect your position. I know the city's in a tough spot for this and I know we want to do something. But, I mean, give us a little bit of time here. I mean, this thing's been sitting here for all this time. I know people are trying to buy this lot now, these lots now. But write it up, go under contract, and let's do due diligence and make sure we do this the right way. So for now, I know other councils want to speak. I yield. Thank you very much.
Counselor in seat two, Counselor Kamara.
Yeah, no, I agree with everything my colleague just said. He's right. The lots possibly are worth what the other lots are worth. And I don't have a problem with doing that. So if you want to do the due diligence and talk to them, see what they negotiate, I understand the situation right now. If they have already a dollar amount that someone's willing to give them, they might not want to do it. But it won't hurt to try. And I think that we should buy the lots and keep it open space because once you don't buy the lots, you'll never get those lots back. If you buy them, at least we'll have an opportunity to enhance them and keep them open space and help the park and do that. Preserve park property and park land, which is what we should be doing. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor in seat three, Counselor Kamara.
Thank you. You know, as we have discussed this nearly an hour, you know, my thought is that to delay is to decide. And that if we delay this any further, considering the movement toward the development of this mini residential development here that's going along Chicago Street, that we're going to lose this opportunity. So I think there is consensus that we want to keep this space as open space. There may be some concern about whether we use this money versus CPA money, whether or not it might be able to be negotiated somewhat down from the $80,000 per lot to probably minimally, minimal reduction. So I really do think that now is the time to do this. I would hate for us to delay this further. If I were on People Incorporated's Board of Directors and I had a potential buyer at the same price that they're offering it to the city, I would say, you know, why deal with nine people who are debating process and in the meantime, we lose this opportunity? So I would like to see action today. And also, I think that to put the administration into the position of doing what is the duty of the council. It is the council's responsibility to buy and sell property. It's not the administration's responsibility to buy and sell property. So if we are in agreement that we want this land as open land and that we want to support the Maplewood Neighborhood Association in their quest, because their quest was a lot larger than this. This is really the end of the line in terms of what they would like to see. I feel that now is the time to do this. Clearly, we're not going to be voting on this in finance. We're going to be voting on this in regular council meeting. So I would ask us to move forward and let's get on with the council agenda so we can address this.
Thank you, Yild. Thank you. Counselor in seat one, Counselor Kadim.
Thank you, Mr. President. To your point, just to my colleagues, I mean, if there's a concern with the timing and the negotiation, we still have to follow 30B requirements. So anytime you purchase property, you have to have advertisement. I know this is a unique piece of property, so we can request a waiver for the advertisement piece, but obviously, there's some timings associated with that. So regardless of what happens, we still have work. I mean, we can't just be entering into agreements with individuals without properly advertising or at least getting a waiver for advertising of property. I mean, it's just part of the 30B requirements of the Massachusetts General Law. I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat seven, Counselor Pelletier.
You know, I don't know if People Incorporated wants to go through all this stuff. Like seat number three said, why should they? They're going to get the $80,000. If they have to go to the meetings and get a lawyer and prolong it and prolong it, I'd say, hey, give me the $80,000, let's put this to sleep. And then the city loses. I don't want to lose it, but that may happen. I yield.
Counselor in seat five, Counselor Vice President LaBeau.
I just wanted to point out that on this plan, the, and I know the developer is offering $80,000 for each lot, but, you know, lots three, four, and five are 3,000 square feet bigger than lot two. Lot two's not even buildable. It's going to need a variance. So I think he's getting a deal on three, four, and five because he's taking one and two or adding it into the bundle. I don't think anybody here is saying they don't want to purchase these lots and they don't want to see the city try and purchase these lots. I think what we're saying is, you know, do the diligence. It doesn't hurt to ask them if there's negotiation on these two lots. And if, you know, Counselor in seat seven chairs in real estate, he always noticed to have a meeting. It's not, we're not saying we'll drag this out forever. But if we can't have a conversation with the Park Board on, you know, what they would do here if they want this, if, you know, People Incorporated couldn't give us two weeks so that we can follow a process? I mean, we're often criticized for not following a process. Here's the council saying we should follow a process. We should do our homework here and now we just want to vote for the $160,000. Sometimes it just, it doesn't make sense. No one's saying they don't want it, but let's do it right. There's nothing wrong with that. That I yield.
Well, Counselor, just to that point, though, I think that if the council takes an action tonight to indicate that, yes, we want the parcels and yes, we're willing to pay this price. No one expected that this was going to close tomorrow. We know we have a process we have to complete. But at least People Incorporated is aware of what the end result might be. Maybe it'll be three weeks or four weeks longer than it might take with another. But any buyer is going to need time to close. So I don't think it's a timing issue per se. And I know there's some concern that we're trying to accelerate this. That's not the case. But absent a decision from the council as to what you are willing to pay, I mean, the negotiation really can't progress too much further. Now, and all I've, and I don't mean to repeat, but your colleague in seat seven raised it along with others. I mean, they have a current offer, whether we support it or not, someone who's willing to pay $80,000 for each of those two lots. If we're not willing to pay $80,000 for those two lots, I could suggest the council tonight could reduce the amount that we're requesting. Just provide us with $150,000. And then we go to the seller and we say, this is what we have and this is what we're willing to pay you. I mean, if price is an issue.
I don't think anyone's saying price is an issue. I think that we're saying, you know, it doesn't hurt to try and negotiate, especially considering one of the lots is smaller. You know, we have a very good relationship.
Yeah, with all due respect, though, Counselor, what you're suggesting is now, just imagine this now. So I know the expectation here is that I'm going to be able to go to People Incorporated, and I'll probably take Corporation Council along with me. But I'm going to go to People Incorporated and try to negotiate the price down from what is another offer that they have on the table. And should I come back and not be able to give you that reduction, we're really setting it up that, well, you know, how hard did you try? Did you make the arguments? Did you tell them that these lots aren't as attractive as the other lots? Obviously, the purchaser in question just gave them a lump sum and said, this is what I'm going to pay you for the five lots. If two of the lots come out of the equation, I would venture to guess they probably still have that same offer for the $80,000. So I understand what the council president's saying, the other lots are worth more. But the offer on the table is the offer on the table.
I understand what the offer on the table is, but that doesn't mean People Incorporated has to accept that offer either.
Well, they've been pretty clear that they're looking for $80,000. Again, we had one point, it was at 85, it's down to 80.
Counselor in seat one, your point of order.
Point of order. You know, Counselor in seat three said that it's the role and responsibility of the city council to purchase and sell property, which it absolutely is. We're sitting here, we're talking about negotiations of the purchase of property. That's an executive session item. We should be holding the executive session with the city council so that we can have full-out conversations with regards to whether or not we want to purchase this property, how much we want to purchase it. Because at the end of the day, we're going to say, okay, we don't want it for $80,000. We want it for $40,000. Well, People Incorporated already knows what our negotiation strategy is. So we're going to be like the LA Lakers, outpitting ourselves for Anthony Davis. Like, it makes absolutely no sense, right?
I agree.
So if we want to do what the city council is responsible for doing and if that's, our responsibility is to purchase, then this council should go into executive session and have strategy sessions in terms of negotiations with real estate. That's just the point of order that I'd like to make.
And you're happy to make that motion, Counselor, in full counsel when it gets there. And I agree with our colleague in seat one. I mean, I think we've had a lot of numbers being discussed here. So any leverage that the city does have is now open in public. So if we want to continue to have these discussions on price, it should be done in an executive session because we are opening up ourselves for strategy purposes. Counselor in seat five, you still have the floor.
I already had yielded.
You yield. Anything further? Counselor in seat three, Counselor Kamara.
Just one last comment. I know that there's been some discussion about we should have a conversation with the Park Board. That doesn't happen. The Park Board does not meet with the council, either subcommittee or the council itself. They have their own open meeting law requirements. They have to post their meetings. And so I think that's a false scenario that we're creating that somehow that board is going to come down. We might have a discussion with Nancy Smith as the Director of Parks and Recreation. But to think that the Park Board is going to meet with the council, that's just not going to happen.
Counselor in seat one, your point of information.
There's nothing stopping us on the open meeting law to have a joint meeting. We've had that in the past. We have that with the school committee. I think we should be having a joint meeting with the school committee shortly anyways, between the city council. So to suggest that the Park Board can't come down to the city council and have conversations about this is just inaccurate. I yield.
Counselor in seat three, you yield?
I yield.
Anything further? Counselor in seat two, Counselor Kamara.
All right, we've gone on enough about this. Why don't we just refer to the Real Estate Committee and then we can have the discussion there, not in the executive session, but in public. People Incorporated can come down and tell us point-blank, this is the offer, this is what we have, take it or leave it. They called us in good faith. They know we tried to buy this land in the past. They know we weren't able to buy the land in the past. It's an outreach to us. You want to buy the land? This is what we've been offered, this is what we can sell it for. If you like it, make us pay what we can get for it. End of story. So everything else, nothing else matters. You want to buy it for that amount or not? We can try and negotiate in good faith. Why would they take it? It doesn't make any sense. I make a motion for it to the Real Estate Committee and we can duke it out there.
Motion to refer to the Real Estate Committee has been made by Counselor Joseph Kamara, seconded by Counselor Kilby. Madam Clerk, is it appropriate to do this in full counsel?
Yes.
Yeah, let's wait for full counsel. We've already, we'll do that full counsel. Thank you very much. Any further questions or comments on this item? Hearing none, thank you. We'll move on to the next item on our agenda. It's item three, collective bargaining agreement with AFSMI EMS unit. It's on, item six on our full counsel agenda. Madam City Administrator, Mrs. Sahadi.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. We were successful recently in negotiating a new contract with the AFSMI unit for EMS. And it is a three-year contract. It commences July 1 of 2019 and runs through June of 2022. Additionally, the financial aspects of the contract are included in your reference here. I just want to make the point, and I know Chief Lynch has joined us here. We have been working very closely with both our EMS division as well as our firefighters to try to create an integration between these departments. And I'm very pleased to say that, you know, both unions have been very cooperative and very supportive of our interest in expanding the services that are provided through EMS. This agreement allows us to not only provide 911 emergency services, but also transfer services. And it also allows us the opportunity to appropriately compensate and change work schedules for our EMS paramedic personnel who are in very short supply and who we are working very hard to retain and encourage to stay and live and work within the EMS department as it currently exists. So we would appreciate an approval from the council this evening. While all of the basic terms, including the financial terms of the contract, will not take effect until July 1, there is an agreement that EMS would like to immediately transition to implementing on a trial basis, 24-hour shifts. These are actually very common in a great many of the EMS departments and even in the private services. And they believe that this is something that's going to enable us to retain the quality paramedic personnel that we currently have. So your vote this evening to support the contract, if possible, and I do appreciate Council President putting this in finance so we could have this open conversation about the contract, would enable us to immediately move forward and implement the 24-hour shifts, again, on a trial basis for one year again, on a trial basis for one year, so that we can try to provide the best possible working conditions for our paramedics. And at that point, I'll yield to Chief Lynch.
Good evening. So if I can elaborate just a little bit on what Mrs. Viveras said. This is something that's been ongoing, and you all before us, a little over two years ago, when we started to implement our integration of EMS and the fire divisions. And this is kind of the second part of it. And it's really a three-fold plan here. And the first thing is, the paramedics, who we know are the best around, deserve this. And this leads right into that. We have some very good senior paramedics, some of them up in the gallery right now, and we want to hold on to them. So this is key, that they get what they deserve here. For instance, in the last 18 months, we have lost a total of 13 paramedics to other communities. Somerset has taken three of our paramedics. Eastern, two. Yarmouth, one. Stoughton, one. Norton, two. North Alabaro, one. Alabaro, three. And Counselor Kandine, I want to thank seat confinats, steel and any of our members. So what we're trying to do is get some parity here, because across the state, there is a shortage of paramedics. And our intention is eventually we'll have firefighter paramedics also, and basics. And this is the first phase of that. So with that being said, it's a good contract for everyone, because now we'll be able to bring public safety to a new level in Fall River. We'll be able to keep those good paramedics that we have, that provide such a great service. And I think that we've all somehow, one way or another, been affected by that, whether we were treated ourselves or one of our family members. And I think you all agree that we are very lucky in Fall River to have probably the best EMS division around. So with that being said, I hope you will support this contract. It was well thought out. Mrs. Viveras, Malin Coelho worked very hard with the EMS union and came to some very good agreements here.
Chief, if you could educate to the council and the community, just a couple of quick things. First off, the last time this collective bargaining contract that was before us, I believe, was maybe two years ago, if my memory serves me correctly.
That's correct.
And this council at that time gave an 11% increase. I believe that was the amount. Am I correct?
Yes.
A pay increase, an 11% increase. So my two points of information for the council is, is there a pay increase for our paramedics in this collective bargaining agreement? You may have indicated that already, and I missed it. And my second question is, I know we've lost 13 wonderful paramedics to other communities, but what are the other communities doing in terms of hours? Are they doing 24-hour shifts?
They are doing 24s, and that was one of the key points of this agreement. When we start negotiations with the EMS union, that was one of the biggest things that they made a point of that. A lot of their members felt that they could not stay here unless they were given the 24-hour schedule. And all these other communities do have 24-hour schedules. And the first part of that question, counsel, is that, yes, there was 11% two years ago, but that just brought the basic paramedics up to par.
I agree with that. I'm just, my only question, chief, is we saw an 11% increase two years ago. Are we seeing another increase this year? If so, what is it?
So, counselor, the effective July 1 of 2019, there are the, what we consider to be hopefully the final adjustments required to achieve that parity between the EMS and the firefighter personnel. Keep in mind that you're effectively going to have the members from each of the departments working alongside of one another when they go out providing the medical services. So there's some adjustments made in year one that would achieve that parity. Overall, counselor, and it depends on the rank and it depends on the position, but overall the parity requires us to make adjustments of approximately 4%. However, the contract also provides that in fiscal year 2021, there'll be a 1% increase, and in fiscal year 2022, there would be another 1% increase. So overall, you're looking at approximately, again, it doesn't affect all individuals in year one because of the adjustments that are being made to achieve that parity, but overall, you're looking at six, which would effectively be two, two, and two for three years, if you wanted to consider it along that vein.
Starting in 19?
Yes. July 1 of 19.
July 19.
Yeah.
Fair enough. Thank you. Counselor in seat three, Counselor Camara? No? Any questions?
Counselor in seat one, Counselor Kandine?
Thank you. What's the financial cost for this entire package?
$341,000, 943.
943. Do you have that broken down by fiscal year or just?
That's the initial, that's the cost of the parity adjustments in year one.
So, okay, so what about?
And then there would be a 1% increase, Cola, for year two and a 1% for year three.
So $341,000 for this, well, $342,000 for this contract for year one. Year two would be?
Again, it's a 1% increase. I'd have to determine.
Dollar amounts, do we know?
Do we need the dollar amounts for the 1%? Do we need the dollar amounts for the initial? Are we going to have a fiscal year?
So?
We figure that 1%.
I thought that, but how would you?
Turn his mic on.
Try using the mic that's for this direction.
There you go. Try that again.
Good.
Yeah.
But I guess when we were looking at it from negotiation standpoints, I don't know who was in the negotiations, but I mean, when we're looking at it from a financial standpoint, we've obviously determined that $341,000 is the impact for year one of the contract, right? So then year two would be, I know the percentages, but I mean, when you're putting a budget together, percentages absolutely mean nothing unless you know exactly what the dollar amount is. So I'm just curious to what the 1%, so, and there's other language in here as well that has some additional costs, it's not just the percentage increase. I'm just trying to figure out what the total package of this is, because as everybody at the table is aware of, and maybe some, I'm assuming my colleagues are, but the audience and the people at home may not be aware that the city council's responsibility is to approve this contract, and once we fund it for year one, we automatically fund it for the remaining years. So I appreciate year one, but as one council, I want to know what the total package is.
Well, and again, counsel, year one, when that number was developed, it took into account the cost for the holiday pay, vacation rates. I mean, it was a comprehensive number, to your point. So if we had the total salary amount, we could just add 1% for year two and year three.
All right. I've got other questions, so if you want to try to figure that out. Just on page, oh, actually, if I could just take a step back. So we've got about 20, 21 items on this. Which, of the 21 items, which ones were our proposals versus the union's proposals?
I don't know that I would have added that in total, counselor.
No, I'm not looking.
I could go through them individually and let you know where they originated, but I couldn't give you a number.
If you could.
Okay, so.
That's what I was looking for, like. So number one, recognition clause, I mean, that's really just housekeeping EMS division, so it's probably just a.
Same thing with the dues.
The seniority clause, the probationary clause, where the city's.
That's the city's proposal?
Correct. Prior to this contract, if you look at the prior contract, there was six months for a probationary period, which is just too short.
Yeah, so you went to?
So we went to the one year.
One year.
Article four, the hours of work, that's the 24-hour shifts. Clearly, that was a union proposal. Medical rounds, that's consistent.
Yeah, medical rounds. The, on page, part of article four, paragraph, where it says EMS employees will be allowed to work no more than 38 hours straight. That was a city proposal, just for the fact of fatigue.
Yep. So overtime?
Swaps, overtime.
Was that hours, the OT?
Correct. Recall, recall to duty, holdover.
Civil service, that's.
Civil service with city.
City.
And that, I forgot the year, but we only have 10 employees currently still hired from the civil service list. Now they don't have civil service for EMS. But we agreed to just go by the civil service rules and regulations for promotional purposes, so we follow the civil service guidelines for that purpose.
Union representation, holidays, vacation, those were all originated from the city. And I want to take this opportunity to stress that it was a very cooperative negotiation between the parties. It may have originated with the city, but when the union came to understand the motivation and the necessity for it, again, there was no us and them.
I don't want to go through the entire contract and go back and forth. I was just hoping that you would know which articles was the city versus the unions. But just in terms of number three, so can we add seniority in rank will be calculated toward vacation slot choice and transfers? Is that, are you just saying that you're going to use?
So now, prior to this, the last contract, we didn't really have lieutenants or captains.
So it's just saying you're going to take seniority based on who's going on vacation?
It's marrying the fireside.
All right. I was just unsure about the language. So on the next page, it's going to be number four, but it's on, one, two, three, four, five paragraphs from the bottom. "Any employee required to remain on duty in excess of his/her normal hours, day or night, in accordance with the submitted 42-hour schedule, shall be paid a rate of time and one-half for the time that they are held over." How was that handled before?
So basically, what happens is if you were working the 24 and I had to hold you in the morning at 7:30 till 10:00 AM, you would get paid from 7:30 to 10:00 AM. There'd be no four-hour minimum. You have to physically leave, go home and get called in, come in, and then that four-hour minimum would kick in. But if you're physically already on shift and it ends and we hold you, you're only paid for the hours that you were there.
On overtime?
Correct.
Right. And so before, so if you were working a 10-hour shift and you were held over?
It was still, it was still the same process, but it wasn't in writing in the contract.
Then the last sentence there, "On Christmas Day, Thanksgiving Day, a two-hour meal break will be allowed based on staffing levels for these particular days." Is that typical for police and fire?
Yes.
Language?
Yeah.
So on number five, I mean, the only issue that I'd say is that EMS employees shall receive the same detail hourly rate as fire and police. I've got no issue with them receiving the detail rate. I know the city doesn't pay for the detail rate. It's obviously outside contractors or vendors who are looking to do that. But the problem with the language being included in the contract is that the minute it's changed in police, you automatically have an adjustment in EMS. So you've just given up all your negotiations. I mean, so, I mean, I think we've got to be cognizant of that, so that any change in police or fire is automatically going to trigger one here. So.
It's usually set by the police department and we follow suit.
I recognize that, but I mean, it's just, from an administrative standpoint, I think we just, you know, obviously, that's one of our leverages that we have, you know, put that out there. In terms of vacation, what were the financial impact and changes for the, I guess, what were the changes first to the vacations on number nine?
Well, I think the important one, counsel, was number one. There really was no firm policy regarding partial years, and Mrs. Coelho felt very strongly that we needed to reduce to writing how that proration would work for someone who had not completed their first full year.
Right, right.
So that came out of the HR department, and I believe the others may have been somewhat adjusted for fire.
Probably with fire.
Yeah.
So you just got the vacation time in line with fire?
Correct.
Yes.
Article, number 11, personal leave. Just curious as to what the financial impact and change was in terms of that. And then the.
Article 11 is.
And the only reason I ask is I didn't have the contract in front of me, so I didn't, it's hard to, without seeing the red line changes, to see what's really changed.
Absolutely. If you look at their current contract now, it's basically the same. We just adapted the 20-hour, four-hour shift. So they used to get two personal days, work in the 10s and 14s, to get two personal days. That was a 10- or a 14-hour shift. We just narrowed it down to one personal day is a 10- or a 14-hour tour. So two personal days is actually one now because they work 24-hour shifts. If they want the whole 24 period off, it can equal 10 or 14 hours to equal 20, a total of 24 hours. So they didn't gain anything there, and we didn't give up anything.
Okay.
It's pretty much the same.
And then medical rounds shall receive a shift off?
Yeah, that's, we did that prior in our current contract, same thing.
So they only go on their, they only go on their medical rounds while they're working? Is that?
No, they have to come in off duty. So they have to go to four medical rounds per medical doctor, control doc. So they have to, they can come to one on duty, but they have to come to three off duty to get the day off, and they have to come to the department rounds for that.
So they don't get a one-for-one, so if they come in for?
No, they have to go to all four.
All right. What is lit days?
Those are the sick incentive days. Again, it's in their current contract, we just adapted it to.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure what that was. The number 13, it just says housekeeping as needed. I'm not sure for the health care plan benefits, what were the?
It's basically the health care benefits that they currently have now. If there's any changes, it'll be obviously for every collective bargaining unit.
I'm confused, so what's?
It basically addresses the rates, counsel, for the single and the family plan, and they had been incorporated into the contract, but clearly every year, based on our process, that those numbers can change. So they basically were referring to whatever the health insurance program is citywide at this time.
So you put the rates?
No, I think we're trying not to. The idea is that whatever the city's rate is for any given year, that's the rate that they would be entitled, that's the benefit that they would be entitled to. I guess previously, they used to include an actual description of the benefit in the contract, but.
Outside of the 75-25 split?
Right, oh yeah, that has, yeah, no, it's just basically what the plan basically represented. Where it changes every year, it was felt that it would just be referred to whatever plan the city has negotiated for all of its employees.
So you're talking Blue Cross? I'm sorry, I apologize. I'm just trying to wrap my hands around it.
No, it's fine.
So you're talking about Blue Cross, Blue Shield?
Yes, health insurance.
So if it's, but that's what I'm saying, you're just talking about the Blue Cross and Blue Shield plans, like an HMO or PPO or?
Right, right.
Is that the language that's?
The rate schedule that's developed annually for each of those plan options that the employee can select are available to the EMS personnel by contract. Essentially what it's saying. But I guess on prior occasions, they used to actually include the actual benefits in the contract.
What I'm saying is, so let's just assume that we don't get, we don't get all this MOA incorporated into a contract, right? Because we're clearly not required to. Because as long as we have a contract and we can work off an old contract, and as long as we have the MOAs. So if the union comes back to us and says, we've got to get all our MOAs incorporated into a contract so we can have one living document, and if it's not you, it's another administration, when they go here, how will they know what changes were to be added to number 13? All it says is housekeeping as needed.
So.
Do you know what I'm saying? So where's?
I'm not certain whether the intent of the human resources directors actually do an amendment to the contract each year as the new plan information is available to us. That would be considered housekeeping. It's not negotiable, so the unions have the benefit of whatever health insurance program is offered by the city, and they're entitled to that. I'm not sure I'm understanding what you're questioning, counselor.
That's funny. Well, I'm questioning that we've got to change. I mean, so all the numbers, you go down, one, two, three, four, it tells you exactly what's been changed.
Correct.
So we don't necessarily know what the change is, but there's language that says add sentence, you know? This one just says health care plan benefits, housekeeping as needed.
Because it changes year to year.
But I guess what I'm saying is, if I pulled up an old contract, how would I, looking at an old contract and then looking at this MOA, how, as, because the contract's a public record, as a system, how would I know what the housekeeping is as needed? Like, we agree to something, I mean, we're agreeing to something that we don't know, there's no language, it just says housekeeping as needed.
I think the housekeeping as needed is because July 1 comes around, the rates could go up, the plan could change. So I think that's what the human resources director was getting at, was that we don't have the answers for the changes yet, but it's housekeeping as needed. So when July 1 comes, whatever the city decides on the plan or rates.
I don't know why we put that specific language in there for health care anyways.
But their current contract does have specific language in it.
All right. Number 15, and I think this is probably one of the bigger ones, too. We've got the miscellaneous, so we've got the section E maternity leave. So it says that the employer will grant six weeks of paid time off prior to the birth of said child. Additional paid accrued leave may also be taken, and then if you go down to the next sentence, the employer shall also grant six weeks of paid time. So under the Parental Leave Act, you're allowed eight weeks of unpaid time off. Under the FMLA, you're allowed 12 weeks of unpaid time off, and your job's going to be held for those purposes. You can, obviously, with the parental leave of the eight weeks, that can be concurrent with the FMLA of 12 weeks, right? But it's unpaid. So an employee is able to utilize their accrued time, their vacation, personal time, to offset the unpaid portion. Why are we paying our employees six weeks and then still allowing them to also utilize? So if they have six weeks of vacation or four weeks, and I don't know what they get, somebody could technically be off for 12 weeks paid for the initial, and then another six weeks paid when the law doesn't require us to pay for that leave. I don't know why we would add that.
So you're suggesting the second six weeks would be, they'd be using up their vacation time and?
No, they could, they potentially could.
Right, okay.
No, they could. They potentially could. You could use additional time off.
The six weeks prior and the six weeks after is, is a negotiated paid benefit for maternity purposes?
Right. So why would we, I guess, why would we agree to the six weeks? And what was the cost, what would the average cost be of six weeks of paid? Because I, I think we are backfilling one-for-one, I would assume, right, on EMS?
Yes.
So it's going to, it's going to cost, so that's six, that's six weeks of paid leave, right? Where the, where the law basically states, the state law is eight weeks of unpaid leave. They can use their accrued time if they want to. FMLA allows the 12 weeks of unpaid. Why would we give them six weeks of paid time off when it's going to cost us an additional overtime to backfill these positions? Because we're going to have, we have a one-for-one fill rate.
It's a negotiated clause, Counsel, and it was a clause that we felt was appropriate, given the nature of the work that they do, given the personal safety risks that they encounter. And very candidly, I don't know that I would have any problems with, with a pregnant woman not responding.
Right. I, I understand that. I'm not, I'm not suggesting that somebody should not have the time off. What I'm suggesting is, is that we're paying.
That's correct.
It's, it's a double liability on our, on our part, right?
Yes.
So we're paying them six weeks paid vacation, and then we're also telling them that they can utilize their vacation time, when the state law specifically says that they have the right to take time to see, to, you know, go through the pregnancy, care for their child after the pregnancy, or an adoption, whatever the case may be. But we are going above and beyond and giving an additional benefit of six weeks paid for, before, and then an additional six weeks. So 12 weeks of paid vacation for an individual.
That's correct.
Okay. So 12 weeks of paid time off, how much would that be on average for an individual?
It's approximately $9,500.
So $9,500 plus how much for the overtime to backfill?
Probably around $15,000.
Per individual.
To fit all those shifts. Well, we also have...
So this, this article alone is, is probably a $25,000 item per individual that takes advantage of it.
That takes advantage of it, yes.
Okay. I mean, it's a lot of money. On top of the 11% that we just gave for an increase, plus an additional, you know, 222 that we work out in this thing. Terms of longevity, what were the increases in longevity?
The total cost of increased longevity was $9,000.
The paramedic stipends, did we have paramedic stipends before? Or they just increased?
They're all the same. Nothing changed.
Nothing changed on those. Okay. All right. I yield.
Thank you, Counsel. Councilon C5, Council Vice President LeBeau.
Thank you. This is an enterprise fund.
Yes, Counsel.
So I've said this before, the EMS does an amazing job with their revenues and expenses. You had said in the first year, it's looking at about a $300,000 increase?
Yep.
And they're going to be able to absorb that into their enterprise.
Yes, Counsel. And to that point, if I could interject, and I could have included this in the overview, but the state has recently enacted regulation to allow for what's called a mobile integrated health. And it's effectively allowing departments to start to offer transfer services. So we're actually very pleased that we're going to be now able to offer the citizens of Fall River the ability to have their own Fall River EMS department transfer them, as opposed to just providing emergency services. That transfer service also comes with additional revenue that we can generate. So we're, and it also, because it's transfer, it's also going to be an opportunity for our firefighter basic to be able to, you know, assist in those transport services as well. So it's, it's a new service that we're going to be offering. I have to commend Director Olivera. He's already started working with the hospital, has already gotten agreement in place, has been very effective working with the chief and generating new revenue sources. But we need the personnel to be able to provide the transport services. So this is actually something that we are not only going to be able to absorb it, but we do have a, a real opportunity to increase revenues by offering these additional services.
I feel like the, this department has done this every year. They, they're always looking for ways to better their services and increase their revenues. And they just, they do an amazing job at it, and they should be commended for that. The second point I wanted to make was, Chief, you had said this, getting to that 24-hour shift and to be able to integrate our paramedics and firefighters. And we're already doing that on one of our trucks. We already have a firefighter and a paramedic.
That's on the squad. That's correct.
Right. So that firefighter now is working a 24-hour shift while that paramedic switches out?
No. He doesn't work 24 hours on a squad. He's only allowed to work one shift, either 10 hours or 14 hours, and he alternates with another firefighter.
So that they're both getting the time on that squad? Okay. And I'm just curious, my last question, I'm just curious, why is a 24-hour shift wanted?
I'll yield to Director Olivera.
The 24, it's just, a lot of our medics are newly married, new children, adult parents work. So if they work a 24-hour shift on, then they have two days off, then they work another 24, then they get four days off. The way the schedule works now, technically, if you started, you worked Monday day, Tuesday night, day off, Thursday day, Friday night, three days off. So technically, you're working four days instead of the two days, 24-hour period.
That's all. I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? My counsel? Councilon C1?
Sorry, I was just going to wait until my colleagues, if they had any additional questions before I made some statements. So I appreciate the, you know, the fact that I have no issues with the 24s. I think the reason a lot of other communities have 24s is because the firefighters are the paramedics. So, you know, it goes one-on-one. But I think it only makes sense that if you've, you've got the paramedics and they're working closely with fire, that they, they should have the 24s. Did we get the numbers in terms of the costs associated for the other additional out years, so that we have the total?
Thirty-five thousand dollars, Counsel, per year.
Per year? So, so another $70,000 on top of the 341?
Correct. Yeah.
You know, I don't know where I'm going to vote on this. I'm just, I think, I think this is a little bit of a heavy, hefty price tag, you know, but I do support the fire department and the EMS folks. I understand the job, and especially in a, in a city like ours where we've got an opioid crisis, drug crisis, we've got individuals climbing, you know, three or four flights of stairs to get to individuals. And it's never an easy task, especially when you start doing knock can, and the first thing you, you're probably getting is a, is a fist in the face or getting yelled at as to, why did you take my high out, right? So I recognize that, but I, I think we've got to be cognizant of what we're giving to, to units. Because, you know, the next group coming down is police, the next group is coming down is fire. So I just want to be cognizant of that when we're looking at all, all these contracts. So again, I...
If I could, Counsel, I just want to interject on that point, because you raised an important point. Because you're right, what you tend to do for one might set a precedent. However, it was very clear when we were negotiating this, and, and we all felt very strongly, this integration is, is creating a major change in working condition. And I know you're very familiar with that. And whenever you're asking employees to make those kinds of major changes in working condition, it, it, out of protocol, if you will, will necessitate an increase in an adjustment. That was number one. So I don't think you'll find any other bargaining unit where we will be asking them to make the huge concession regarding working conditions that we're asking the EMS personnel to undertake. So that was number one. And then additionally, because of the parity issues, which you can appreciate, I think that the money that the medics are now achieving, granted, it was because of the integration, it was because of the necessity for the parity, but I think there was a consensus here that, that they earn every bit of what we've afforded them in this contract because of the work that they do and the skills that are required. So...
I mean, my, my biggest hesitation, and again, is, is really the parental leave. I just, I just think that what we do, obviously, you know, it doesn't become an issue if we're, if we're not a, a department that's not filling one-for-one, right? So it's just, it's an exponential increase because we've got 12 weeks, then we've got additional vacation time that if that individual doesn't use it, I don't know if they got carryover language or we've got to buy them out in terms of vacation. So I'm not sure. That creates an unfunded liability for the, for the years out on top of the overtime. So that, that's my concern in terms of that. Again, listen, I, I feel that, you know, any parent should have the right before and after to be with their, their new child, whether it's a newborn or an adoption. I completely understand that. But again, I think there's a lot that goes into municipalities and the services that we provide. And I can also appreciate, Chief, individuals jumping to, to go to other, other communities. I'm sure we've, we've stolen from other communities as well, so...
You haven't stolen anybody.
That's because you got, you got to work harder.
One additional point, too, Counsel, I just, the chief just reminded me here, we did, through December 31st, the EMS division has already taken in $280,000 over the prior year. So the revenues are clearly there to support the contract.
Right. And that's what I was going to get to, is the ambulance receipts. It's, they are a, a revenue generating department, more so than, than other departments. So I, I will be supporting it. I would just obviously caution some of the other stuff here. So with that, I yield.
Thank you, Counsel. Anything further? Any other counselor? Harry, now, next item on the agenda is going to be, thank you very much, Chief, is a resolution to discuss paying for a, the city's portion of the New Durfee High School's debt service. Madam City Administrator? Motion to give the item leave to withdraw. This is, again, to discuss the city's plans of paying for a New Durfee High School. Have been made by Counsel Stephen Kamara, seconded by Counsel Kilby. Roll call.
I'm granting the resolution leave to withdraw. Counselors Kadeen?
No.
Joseph Kamara?
Yes.
Stephen Kamara?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lally, the vote?
No.
Long? Pelletier?
Yes.
Viveras?
Yes.
President Ponti?
No.
Next item on our agenda is the mayor and a five-year financial forecast of city revenues and expenditures referred to committee on the 22nd of January. Madam City Administrator, Mrs. Sahadi? Brief overview.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. You have before you a, the financial forecast for five years. I'm just, Mrs. Sahadi is prepared to answer all of your questions, as am I to assist. But this is a requirement of the new charter that the administration is to provide you with a five-year financial forecast on January 1. So we, we were, we were close to that date. And we are complied with the charter requirement in providing that to you. The only comment I would make is that it's difficult on January 1 to even appropriately forecast what's going to be coming in the first fiscal year, which in this case would be fiscal year 2020, because you're still six months out. You haven't gotten any receipts in. At the time this was prepared, we didn't have any local estimated receipts. We now have the governor's budget, but of course, we know there are two other branches of government as well that we'll need to weigh in. And we haven't even begun to look at the budgets for the upcoming fiscal, in this case fiscal 2020. So what you're looking at is, is a living document. Mrs. Sahadi would tell you that that forecast could change on a daily and even hourly basis as we go into this budgetary season. But again, we did want to comply with the charter requirement, and the forecast that you have before you was based on the information that we had available to us when it was put together, which, as I said, was even before we began active preparation of the fiscal 2020 budget.
Councilon C5, Council Vice President LeBeau.
Yes. I know that this was given to us at our last meeting, so I appreciate the timing of that. But at the, what I was looking for, and I wasn't sure if it was going to be updated in here, I know you don't have all the numbers in, but we do have the governor's numbers, and that's what was presented in the press conference with the surpluses. This is a, a repeat of what we got two weeks ago, which still has all the deficits in it. Can we get the update that was shared at the press conference?
Certainly, Counsel, Counselor, we could, we could add the governor's budget, but I am concerned about updating the projection or the forecast on a daily basis. As Mrs. Viveras says, this document changes almost daily. It certainly has changed again since, since the time that the press conference occurred. The press conference included all of the governor's budget information, which in this particular year was a significant increase in both state aid for the governmental entity, as well as the state aid allocated to Chapter 70 and the, and the charter school assessments. What came out after the presentation on, I'm not even sure what day it was, but the press conference was now the foundation budget for the school department. So that's now changed again in terms of what the, what the city's responsibility is with regard to net school spending and, and the foundation budget. The larger departments, police department, fire department, we haven't even received their budgets for. So basically, what we have prepared here for you based on the charter, and actually had been prepared by this administration and prior administrations for many, many years, is a five years of projections based on what we at least know for historical data. So even if you look at this, the state aid for, the local state aid, has only been increasing 2.5% to 3%. And you can see over the first column, you can see we're 2.8, 2.2. There was some talk in the media that school would be increasing. Certainly, it's increased some higher than was in this particular projection, but you can see that we used 5.9 and then 3.1 and then leveled it off. So in terms of being able to provide you with another update, this was the forecast that was requested or required as part of the charter. We won't be updating this again until we start to work on the next five years. So we are now working on the fiscal '20 budget, and we will be working on the fiscal '20 budget until it's presented to you. And that will be rolled into the first column, and the projections going out for '21 to '25 would then continue to be updated.
So you said that there was, the foundation budget had come in?
That's correct, Counsel.
What else are we still waiting for?
I'm sorry?
Did you say there was one other thing we were still waiting for?
We're still waiting for, and there has not been a requirement of our departments yet, I believe it's this coming Friday, most of the larger departments. So we don't have the police budget yet. We don't have the fire budget yet. We just received the MIS budget. We're still waiting on facilities and DCM. So we have some of the smaller departments. Certainly, some of the other information with regard to health insurance, we're currently discussing it with GBS in terms of what the proposal increase will be. We do have the amortization scheduled for the retirement, so that information has been populated in the FY '20 budget now with the actual amount that we will be required to pay. I think that pretty much takes care of most of the larger expenses within the, the budget process.
So I understand that this is a requirement, and, you know, the numbers that we have are, are deficit. And then, you know, in the press conference, it, it speaks to these numbers, and then the governor's numbers, and then it gives numbers that are all surpluses. But that changes on a day or the week or whatever?
As I receive, right, as we receive budgets from the department heads and we sit down with the department heads, you will see in this particular document, most of the departments, we increased salaries by 2%. Some of the expenditure line items, we also increased by 2%. Others, we either decreased or increased by larger amounts. A perfect example is with the EZ contract, we know exactly what the amount is, so we were able to populate it with that amount. Other things like retirement, we know it's going up 6.3% to 6.5%, so we utilize that information. But in terms of what the MIS department has for needs, what the police department has for needs, we haven't populated the FY '20 budget with that yet because it's too early. We're, we're only here on February 5th. So this will continue to change. The reason that it went from a deficit at this particular point to a surplus is the governor provided us with $10 million more in state aid that wasn't being projected in, in the original document.
With that, I yield.
Anything further? Councilon C2, Councilon McMurran.
How many departments have given you their budget so far?
Just so happens I did that before I came. Most of the smaller ones, Counselor. So we have received, we have populated the salary budget for almost all of the smaller departments and have received most of their expense category, expense budgets. Most of the departments that are left are going to be your larger departments, as well as the indirects haven't been calculated, because we don't have the sewer department, the water department, or EMS. So there's a lot of work left to do. This is very early in the budget process.
How many departments have given you their budget?
How many departments have given you their budget? You said most of the smaller ones. How many are there altogether? Twenty-three departments?
Approximately nine.
Nine out of how many?
Thirty, maybe.
Nine out of thirty.
And in fairness, councillor, we gave them deadlines. So they're still, some of them are still well within their, their allotted time.
They're so well within their time. It is so premature. I don't know how anyone can say that the budget is balanced or not balanced right now. Last week, there was a negative. Now there's a positive. Next week, it's going to go back to a negative. The MIS budget, you got their budget?
We received it today.
Was it level same as last year? Was there a decrease? Was there an increase?
We will be sitting down with Mrs. Lewis tomorrow to discuss her budget and to look at what the needs are of that department.
So we don't know if it increased or decreased from last year?
Her, her presentation has an increase in it.
Has an increase?
Yes.
So we might be back in the negative again?
Correct. It's possible.
So I mean, we try to figure these things out. It's so premature. I don't know of any city in the Commonwealth that can say whether or not they're going to bounce budget on the first week of February. It's impossible.
Actually, councillor, I think, I think the pro forma had, had it been presented to you in, you know, late spring, might have had a lot more relevance because it could have used the new FY '20 budget numbers and then projected from there. But right now, a lot of it is relying on what we know for the current fiscal year. So it, it makes it challenging.
I agree. It makes it kind of useless. It doesn't, it doesn't mean anything. The budget you gave us last year is obsolete. And that last week is obsolete right now.
Yeah, so.
All right. With that I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councilman C. One, councillor Kadim.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Can, so when I'm looking at this, the FY '20, you're showing a, just on, overall, what we, what we know, the FY '20 budget does not include revenues for the bags. Is that correct?
That's correct, councillor.
So that's the $1.2 million deficit that you have, but you're saying that obviously that doesn't include the governor's numbers?
Yes. So if, you look at just the components of it, if you look at local receipts, that's where your bags would have been. So you see that the 19 bags are 22 million and the 20 local receipts, I'm sorry, that, I didn't mean to say bags, but the local receipts for 19 are 22 million. And for 20, it's 20 million. So that's where the reduction is in local receipts. And then the governor's budget, you'll, you now see the, the increases in this particular document. In your document, you don't see the increases. But now what councillor in seat five was indicating is that the document that the mayor had for the press conference then included the governor's budget being populated into the document itself.
Okay. So then, in terms of that, though, the mayor's document was also showing 2.2 million in 2021. So what would, what would the carryover, that, that's just assuming that you're going to have those increases?
That's assuming that the increases would continue based on the percentages that you see in this document, meaning the governor's budget or the, when it comes out of conference committee, the increases in 2021, 22, 23 would be for general aid, 2.2%, 2.1%, 2.1%. And that's based on historical data.
Yeah. So, so here's.
The same thing with education.
Right, right. And I appreciate that. But the problem is, is that we just got $10 million in Chapter 70 that's based on the governor's numbers. Four million of that's going to go right to the charter school, right? So we've got about.
It's, it's $7 million. 6.9 million dollars and change. That's correct.
So, I mean, we, so that leaves us with four million for schools? Is that, is that what you're saying? What are you saying the six million was?
The, the net increase.
Oh, the net increase.
Is 6.9 million dollars.
To, to the four public schools? Or is that?
In total. If we look at Chapter 70 and, and charter school only, it's 5.9 million. There's approximately a million dollars, a million one of general aid increase in the governor's budget. The remaining aid increase was all education.
Right. So my point is, is the governor has made statements that he was going to increase Chapter 70s, but was also going to increase the requirements for, for spending. So we haven't even understood what that really is going, the ramifications of that.
That's correct.
Moving forward for education.
That's correct. But can I just?
Yep.
So we do have some idea. We've been meeting with Mr. Almeida, as well as Superintendent Malone. And so we are now working on what those new requirements are going to be with regard to the foundation budget. DESC has now published that, publicized it on their website.
Okay.
So again, after this was prepared.
Yep. So I, I will say, and I know everybody's happy with the elimination of the purple bags. We still have a program. And yes, it's great. I mean, somebody appeals to somebody's emotion to get some political support is good. I think everybody here would agree that we all disliked going to get trash bags. But that's $1.3 million in revenue to offset an expense. And I think we would all agree that looking at a five-year, and I understand this is a living document, we're not flush with cash. We're not swimming, you know, saying, oh, wow, look at this $5 million surplus, right? In two years from now, or three years from now, we look at the pension, you've increased to 6%. But then we also have a significant increase in the pension in the years out afterwards that, that gets to some ridiculous numbers in order us, for us to be fully funded for pension, right? So it's like asking, you know, homeowners who are working two jobs to pay for their mortgage, their electric, their gas, and then all of a sudden saying they haven't to work two jobs, saying, well, you know what? I really don't like my second job. I'm going to quit my second job, but I still have all the bills. And I need that revenue to, to pay, you know, the expenses that are associated with this. Also not included in this outlook is also the OPEB unfunded liability, which again, still has not yet been determined by the state as to when and how municipalities are going to have, have to really get that down to fully funded. And that's going to be a nightmare, just like the pension. And we're going to start to see some significant increases, increases like we've seen over on the, on the pension side. The mayor was on the radio the other day talking about potentially getting rid of the stormwater fee, right? A, a flat fixed fee that is paying for a federally unfunded mandate for the CSO projects. We just went to the, to the ballot and the voters of this community voted to authorize a bonding of $123 million for an initial 20-year integrated plan of roughly $300 million. The 50-year plan is like almost half a billion dollars, right? So we've got another CSO project, and again, unfunded mandates that are coming down from the EPA based on our stormwaters that we haven't even addressed. And when we look at CSO and stormwater and the debt service associated with that, I mean, that's 50, probably 50, 51%, if not higher now, of all the debt that we've issued. I mean, there's no relief in any of that, that debt going there. So if we eliminate that, that means we've got to find some revenue somewhere else. So are we going to throw it on the user fee, which is now a variable rate? So that's, you know, the 200, $300 water bills that people are getting are now going to be 500, 600, $700. We just tabled the discussion on how we're going to pay for the New Durfee. We've got a debt exclusion. I think if you look at what we were talking about and what I, the argument that I was making, if we kept that revenue, the, the trash, the, the purple bags, the pay-as-you-throw program that generated $1.3 million, and if we fully enforced it, would be a lot more revenue than that, could have offset the debt exclusion. So now we've got homeowners on top of everything else, the, the water bills that they're getting, everything else that we're seeing here, plus we haven't identified the OPEB. We haven't identified any of our capital needs, you know, both infrastructure, internal, you know, equipment, things of that nature. We're seeing deficits, and we've got an administration that's trying to appeal to people's emotions to get elected. And there's no strategic planning going on in terms of what our bills and liabilities truly are. And that's fine, because we've, we've seen this in the past. And, you know, we tend to sit here and, and is that all, that old saying, let's learn our history so we're not doomed to repeat it? But we've seen administrative, administrations kick the can down the road, and then we get to a situation where we're not properly funding and paying for our liabilities. That's essentially what is going to happen when we continue to eliminate all these fees, just to make people happy as opposed to trying to articulate the reason behind why we have these fees in place, right? Because at the end of the day, there's only, only so much revenue that we can generate. So in terms of the debt exclusion, somebody who is on average $300,000 property value has a $4,000, roughly a $4,000 tax bill. And in 20 years, or 10 years, they're going to see their tax bill almost go up 50% because of assuming a prop 2.5% increase, right, going up to the 2.5% levy. And then you're going to have to get the additional revenue to pay for that debt. So at the end of the, at the end of the day, in 10 years, people are going to be looking at their tax bill and saying, well, what, what happened? Well, we did a debt exclusion to pay for a high school that we all agree that is needed. Because we weren't able, or we weren't smart enough, or fiscally prudent enough to say, you know what? We've got revenue. Let's not eliminate revenue, but let's utilize the revenue that we have in our operating budget and deal with the debt service and all the projects that we have so that we're not going back to the well to the taxpayers. We've got some significant, well, at least I've got some significant concerns in terms of what we're doing from a financial standpoint, the, the services that we're providing. And I understand you folks get your direction, and you can only do what you're supposed to do. But I've got some concerns here because there's, there's a lot more that we have to deal with coming down from both, you know, the federal and state government that are requiring us to do different things. And we haven't really significantly increased our revenue pools of money coming down. So I'm concerned about that. And I'm concerned about what we're going to have to do to kind of generate and make up for these revenues. That's just me as one councillor. With that I yields.
Thank you. Anything further? Nothing further? Hearing none. Thank you very much. I believe there was somebody else who wanted to sign up for citizens input. Is that individual here? Have they left? Okay. Is there somebody else who needs to sign up for citizens? I don't think so.
Attorney Levin signed up, I believe.
Attorney Levin is here, yes. He is here on item four. That's on full counsel. But if he, but he hasn't signed up for citizens input. So, oh, there is somebody, I knew somebody was asking for citizens input. Mr. DeLima, you can come on down. Just state your name and address for the record, please. Three minutes. No worries.
Good evening. My name is David DeLima, 454 Bird Street. It's been a long day. So I actually swung by earlier and dropped off some flyers that I had gotten online. They were in regards to Diamond and Orbans contract renewal. The reason why I chose to, excuse me. The reason why I chose to come in is because I realized the impact that he had on me while I was attending school back then. I know it can be kind of tough with politics being involved, but I really believe that the two appointees that we have should really take into consideration the importance of such involvement in a role like that. It's, to me, it's unfathomable that you would want a leader not to be heavily involved. It's, when I actually took the minute to, to read his accomplishments, I, I already knew that, to me to read it, I'd probably run through the three minutes that we have. So that's why I chose to actually swing, swing it by earlier. I did also include a note of when the next meeting would be. Just knowing that, you know, through the hustle and bustle of what everyone does, with some of the issues that we have going on, the important things can sometimes fall through the cracks. I, you know, I, I really don't know the, I don't know the process of appointments. From what I understand, you know, we're limited, or not, not we, you're limited as a council on what you could say and do and the support that you could show and not show in regards to appointees or their actions. But I, you know, the, the more I looked into the contract negotiations, the violations of open meeting law, deliberation beforehand, potential ethic issues, I, you would imagine that an, an appointment would, would come into question when, when such actions have been documented. Now, you know, granted, I'm a local tradesman.
15 seconds.
I travel a lot, and the days can be long. And I really give you credit for that because I forgot how long these meetings could be. But I would hope that you would at least take the time to ask the question of what's going on, even though, you know, we have this, so many storms looming around us.
Thank you, Mr. DeLima.
And I would ask that you would.
Time is up, Mr. DeLima.
Okay. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
It's been a long time, but thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your thoughts. Is there a motion to adjourn? Finance? Motion to adjourn finances been made by councillor Kadim, seconded by councillor Pelletier. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We're going to go right into full counsel. All set, Madam Clerk? For our city council meeting will now be called to order, Madam Clerk.
Councillor Kadim?
Here.
Joseph Kamara?
Here.
Stephen Kamara?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Lallaby LeBeau?
Here.
Long?
Here.
Pelletier?
Yeah.
Viveras?
Here.
President Ponti?
Here. If everybody in the chamber can please rise for a moment of silent prayer. Thank you. A salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Madam Clerk?
The first item before you is a communication from the mayor and a request to amend city ordinances with regard to the vacant building registration.
Motion to refer to the committee on ordinance has been made by councillor Kilby, seconded by councillor Stephen Kamara. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item number two is a communication from the mayor and an order for the five-year contract for school department internet and fiber network.
Do we accept the communication and adopt the order?
Second.
Motion to adopt the order has been made by councillor Stephen Kamara, seconded by councillor Kadim. Discussion. Councilman C. One?
I don't know if I should waive the rules. Just ask Mr. Michael Azak if he wants to come down. He's been here all night. I miss talking to him on my days in the school committee, so.
Do you want to waive?
No, no, I'm just kidding.
Okay. Motion to adopt, you yield, councillor?
I yield.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Next, we have the communication from the mayor and the order appropriating $375,050 from CPA funds for historic resources preservation projects for the flow of a public library.
Motion to adopt the order?
Motion to adopt the order has been made by councillor Kilby. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by councillor Pelletier. Discussion, councillor in seat one. Councillor Kadim.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to waive the rules?
Motion to waive the rules to invite the administration down has been made by councillor Kadim. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by council vice president LeBeau. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And if, if, on your way down, if you could speak either Mrs. Viveras or Mrs. Sahadi specifically on the CPA funds on this, is this going to deplete any reserves in CPA funds? If you could educate the council on that, that'd be great. And then I'll turn it over to my colleague in seat one, who has the floor.
Certainly, councillor. I wasn't prepared this evening to bring the unreserved balance of the CPA funds. And I can certainly get you that information. But it's my understanding that there is a significant amount of unreserved or undesigned CPA funds at this particular point.
There is a significant, I'm sorry?
Balance in the unreserved, undesigned CPA funds.
You have a point of order?
Yes.
Point of information?
I believe that Mrs. Dennis might have that information.
Do you want to invite her down, or is she prepared to speak on it?
A motion to waive the rules?
Sure. Come on down.
Thank you.
We've already waived the rules. Councilman C. One, you have the floor. Councilor in seat one, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm sorry to-
I actually wasn't prepared to talk tonight either. I came just as a observer. But, the amount in our, and actually, Mr. Soul's one of the committee members, if he wants to speak on it prior to myself.
My name is Jim Soul. I live at 520 Rock Street, a member of the CPA committee. I'm gonna refer to Cady, because she really knows the numbers of the budget.
Um, you, your question was, how much do we have in our unreserved?
Yes.
Um, right now, we have, well, $375,000, $475,000, almost $500,000.
And that does not include the $375,000?
No. That'll bring us down to about $148,000.
Okay. Allow the council to speak. Councilor in seat one.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I apologize, I, you folks may not have been prepared to speak on the matter, because you might have thought it was gonna get referred, but since it's being adopted, I've, I've got some questions in terms of, again, we kinda alluded to my disagreement with the utilizing CPAs for this. I, I think, again, this is a, a city building, I think we should've known that the roof needed to be repaired at some point, and I'm just curious as to what the maintenance department was doing in terms of when they, when they saw the roof leaking, what some of the requirements were. And again, when we've got $500,000, I, I almost, and I know we try to leverage as much money as we possibly can, but we've got zero money in maintenance, we've got items that are identified in insufficient capital item accounts that I think we should be utilizing before we start tapping into this, or at least going to the CPA with some money, asking for, you know, maybe 50% or 20%, but to go hat in hand to ask for the entire amount when we've got not only revenues, reserved, reserve account monies within our operating budget, we've got stabilization account, and we should have a capital plan in place to identify this. So I'd like to know, from a maintenance standpoint, when did we know about this?
Um, Counselor, it was part of the community compact, and when it was scheduled out by both our maintenance department, as well as the individuals that were assigned to the City of Fall River, with regard to the community compact, it is in there, but it was scheduled out two or three years down the road. So there was an, an issue at the time when both facilities and community compact individuals reviewed the project to determine that it was in the need that it's currently in. And that's particularly reason, the particular reason why they've gone to the CPA for emergency funding.
And just to add, if I might, Counsel, just to add to that, so, the building roof, as Mrs. Sahadi, just to follow up, they actually did an inspection, and the roof looked to be in reasonably decent condition, but it was leaking, so they felt that they were gonna be able to patch and stop the leaks. And there were numerous attempts by different individuals, one of which was somebody who's actually employed on the school side, that's very adept at that, also took an effort to try to resolve it, and the conclusion was, is that they just couldn't adequately address it, and they needed to replace it. But the full expectation was that it could be repaired, like any other roof project, and ultimately, the full replacement would come several years down the road, but it reached a point where they felt that the repairs just weren't working.
So, so I guess I got a general question, and I'm starting to see a little bit more of this. Do we, do we have, internally, do we have conversations with the finance, like, are these decisions made amongst everybody, or is it in a vacuum, that we've got projects, and we're just saying, hey, we're gonna come down to the city council, we're gonna use CPA monies? But, I mean, are we talking to the financial team, or are you folks talking to, to say, okay, let's, let's identify, you know, we've got, we've got this for revenue, potential funding sources, we've got CPA, we've got stabilization account, we've got operating budget. Are we having those conversations to, to figure out what the best use of our monies in, in active accounts? I mean, there's, there's a lot of things that are going back and forth. I'm just curious as to whether or not we're doing that, and, and when we start looking at it, I mean, from CPA, $500,000 is not a whole lot for reserve, right? And so, I, I think the CPA money should be used for projects that would otherwise not be kept for, or maintained for historical purposes, right? So, it's trying to help the community, and obviously, the city on projects that we wouldn't otherwise be able to get. And I think we should be leveraging CPA monies, not just using it to do, you know, circumvent and just keep, you know, $7 million on a stabilization account, or not utilize money that we have in an operating budget. I just, I just, I personally don't agree with that. I mean, that, that is the people's money, we're, we're getting taxed on top of our real estate taxes to provide for the CPAs. But there are a lot of projects in the city, there are buildings that are continuously getting demolished, that are historic, and I think those monies should be used to try to entice, you know, the maintenance and, you know, the architectural structure and history of our, our city. I mean, we're taking on parking garages, right? We're gonna have to maintain parking garages. You know, we, we've got, again, a library that has a roof that's leaking, but we don't have a budget for it. We've got the school department that currently has a pool that's closed, because they need to get something fixed. The school department went, again, to the CPC for money for the ad building. They didn't get money for the windows. Say, you know, we've got boilers in, in some of the schools that need to be replaced, we've got fire stations that need to be replaced. I mean, these, these are types of things that I get frustrated with, and then we're gonna buy some additional land to add on to the, the, you know, the amount of property that we own that we're not properly maintaining. And, and again, we're just going to a well, hat in hand, not trying to kick in some additional monies to offset a building that is, number one, being operated by us on a daily basis, and general maintenance and planning should be done. Now, granted that you've got the capital plan, it was two years out, I understand that, you know, things happen where, you know, and Mr. Cabral, I believe, is the individual that you were talking about, he, he has done a tremendous amount of work on that roof, and is familiar with the roof. So, I mean, Jeff, right, I say Maderis, what's it, uh, Cabral, Mr. Cabral, Cabral, sorry. So I, I know he's familiar with it, so it, I trust his analysis of it, but I, I just don't know that this is a good use of CPA monies. That's just me as one individual.
Well, just to add, Counselor, so again, we never intended, we didn't start out thinking we were gonna use CPA funds for this project. That's, we put it in the capital plan. Had we intended to use CPC, we would've applied September 1, met the deadline, and put the project forward, but we really expected that we were gonna be able to do adequate repairs, and allow it to be addressed in a timely manner. So it did come to them as a bona fide emergency circumstance, and it is a historic building, to your point, so.
So to that point in the operating budget, how much do we have in the reserve account? In the operating budget?
In the appropriation account?
Yes.
$1.1 million.
So we've got $1.1 million in the reserve account, which a reserve account is used for emergency purposes, for unforeseen items that may take place during the fiscal year that we did not necessarily budget for. I, I think this would fall under that category of an unforeseen emergency need to fix a roof. We've got that money in the operating budget, in the operating budget. It's not like we've gotta go out and bond, we, we've got it in the operating budget. Is there a reason why we're not utilizing the reserve funds?
Well, Counsel, again, it is a capital expenditure, so we opted to go a capital route to accomplish that. You're right, we could've used, but I, I would say, and I know Mrs. Sahadi has mentioned this a number of times, so I'm, I'm familiar with, we, we did look at that account and felt that it might be very advantageous to us to be able to offset the snow and ice deficits that we routinely incur, and those are operating expenses. So we, we made a differentiation towards using it for operating needs that we were anticipating, as opposed to capital needs, which we felt the CPC would be appropriate, especially since it is a historic building, and one that we felt they would wanna preserve, so.
And the great thing is, I have off-street parking now, we've had no, not one parking van, so there's no need for-
Still time, Counsel.
There is still time, but, I mean, there's not, there's not a whole lot of time, but I, I, again, I think you've got the $1.3 million there. You know, in a perfect world, if we don't use that money, that's gonna flow to free cash, the free cash is gonna be asked for us to transfer it over to a stabilization account, the $7 million is gonna increase to $8, $9 million. Meanwhile, we just depleted, or almost nearly depleted, you know, a reserve account for the CPC committee to be able to use for other projects that wouldn't otherwise potentially be funded for, that the city has no ability whatsoever to provide individuals grant money for. So, again, I, I think we have the money in the operating budget set aside for reserves, so unless you tell me that there is something that you are holding, the $1.3 million, I for one will not be supporting the use of CPC money for the library, and I will request that the administration come back down for a transfer from the reserve account into the library or the building maintenance account to get the roof fixed immediately. So, with that, I yield.
Thank you. Any further questions? Anything further? Councilor in seat three, Councilor Kamara.
Well, I share my colleague in seat one's concern, and I do think that this seems to be generating a, a use of the CPC funding that should've been a last resort, rather than the first resort. It, and again, in, in looking at some of the history of this, from Leanne Verbal to Chris Gallagher in April, there was comment made that Chris looks like the roof was done in 1986, and then repaired in 1997. That was in April. So it seems as if there was a clear indication on the part of the library administrator that this was not an issue that snuck up on us in January of 2019. It was an issue that had a long history of having to be addressed. And then, there was another notation, I'm sorry, Mr. Gallagher's not here, because I, I did have some questions for Mr. Gallagher, but I also see that, see if I got the date In a application, January 8, there's indicated, an indication that funding requests were made to two library boards, which were rejected. It doesn't specify when those meetings were of the library boards, but this, this was dated January 8, so presumably, sometime in 2018, two previous library board meetings were held. I don't think anyone from the library is here, but I, I, I wonder, why would the library board reject two requests for funding? If clearly, the roof, and again, it's, it's indication that at least as far back as April it was clear that there was, there was a problem, why wouldn't the library board go to the city administration and say, we need some funds transferred, possibly, here at the city council, so that funds were taken in order to repair this roof? So, you know, I, regrettably, this issue has caused me some anguish, because of a very dear friend, who's chairman of, of this board, and I are probably not talking because of my challenging a, a perception that somehow, this CPC money is somehow money that's not tax money. It is tax money, correct? Is there any denial that the money that is generated through the Community Preservation Act is locally generated tax money? Is that true?
That's correct.
And, and also, there is a match that the state provides to this money? It, it was a significant match at one time, rather insignificant now, but is there some state money that comes and is a match that ends up in the CPC budget, if you will?
Yes, Counsel.
There is. What is that percentage? Do you know most recently, or does-
Twelve? Twelve percent?
About twelve percent.
I'd have to check for sure, but-
Yeah, so it was, it's really significant, insignificant, in terms of what it once was. I think it once, once was probably about 80 or 90% when, when the program first got started, and then it's been reaching, because so many communities throughout the Commonwealth are taking advantage of this, because it is a good source, and I, I was a supporter, I voted, it was sort of a tax on a tax, that's what it is, it's a 1.5% additional tax beyond our general tax bill, and there is, for some people, it's not a popular tax, because no one likes to add taxes on top of taxes. But I think the arguments that were made in the, in the, in the vote that the public, people of Fall River voted for, we were the first gateway community, as I understand it, in Massachusetts that said yes, and that's a credit to Fall River, that it, it said yes to a pot of money whose purpose was to promote historic preservation, and open space, and affordable housing. I believe those are the three criteria of CPA funding, and it has to address one of those three issues. It shouldn't be addressing general maintenance. This is not a pot of money that is to be used to ignore the fact that the city should have a maintenance account. So, my question is, why, well, let me ask a preliminary question. How much of a maintenance budget does the library have, annually?
Most of their, those types of accounts, I think, would be in Mr. Gallagher's budget. I don't know that they have a maintenance budget, per se. He's, it's, it's buildings.
The library doesn't have a maintenance budget?
Well, not for these kinds of capital repairs.
Okay, so, Mr. Gallagher's budget-
Yes.
Has a maintenance budget for these type of affairs?
Yes.
So what is the amount of money in Mr. Gallagher's budget, annually, approximately, to address these kinds of-
I don't have that number with me, Counsel.
I, I don't either, Counsel.
Do you have your budget with you? It's probably in your-
Well, we can take a look at it further.
Certainly.
I hesitate to table this because of the emergency nature of it, but I appreciate my colleague in seat one's concern, that this is not the purpose of CPC funds, even though it is local tax money. It's not money that, that comes from any other source other than the local taxpayer. And to, and to, to go to the CPC funding, when the CPC funding should not be used for this purpose, is bad public policy. And so, you know, I-
Well, but Counsel, I think, I mean, it is, it is the people's money being expended for the people's library. I mean, I, I don't know that I would, I would say it's an appropriate use of it. Now, clearly, I agree with your distinction between maintenance and capital, and again, we were trying to do the maintenance route. It wasn't for lack of money, it wasn't for lack of trying, we had, we had the roofing experts tell us, we can't fix this, we've tried, and it needs a full replacement. So, it, it wasn't for lack of trying to address it on a maintenance level, it became a capital requirement, but one that wasn't anticipated.
Well, there were two meetings of the library board where they rejected going after funding, and there was a decision, again, in April, when the administrator of the library sent a notice to Chris Gallagher, saying the Chris, Chris looks like the roof was done in 1986, and then repaired in 1997. If there was a roof that was done in 1986, and now we're in 2018, most roofs don't last more than 30 years, and this was already beyond 30 years. There were some repairs in 97.
And, and those, had they been comprehensive, would've given 20 years or more, so we'd be right around where we are now, Counsel.
But the damage that is so visibly-
No, that's, that's true, then that's why we're treating it as emergency, you're right, Counsel.
It's, it wasn't a secret that this hole was in the roof. This was a, was a clear, present danger that the city refused, it seems, to take proactive action by finding resources either in the stabilization fund or in the maintenance budget. So what is the maintenance budget in, in Chris Gallagher's department?
So, in Chris Gallagher's department, it's $294,000, but this is strictly for maintenance, and by replacing the roof, we're really talking about a capital item now, and that capital item would not have been in his operating budget.
Right.
So, the repairs that have been done by Mr. Cabral have been paid for out of Chris Gallagher's budget, but it would be strictly maintenance-type expenditures that would be applied against that, those accounts.
Okay. And then finally, as it relates to the CPC money, the 1.5% above the taxes that the City of Fall River pays, that money goes directly to CPC, or does it go to the general fund and then is appropriated to CPC? What, what's the channel?
It, it goes directly to the CPC.
Okay. And it doesn't go out of Fall River? It doesn't go to the state, and then the state adds its match, and then it all comes back to Fall River? It's all internal money that goes, it's local taxpayer money that is directed to CPC? And, one of my concerns about the board, and I know that Mr. Soul is, is privy to my, to my comments, is that the CPC board is an administrative board, is it not?
They're making administrative- They're making administrative decisions.
How does the CPC board come to be?
That's by state statute.
And by appointment by the mayor and by the president of the council?
Yes, there are councils, and some are designated from other boards. There's a representation process.
But then ultimately, it is an administrative board. It's not a legislative board. It's not a.
No, that's correct, Counselor.
It's not an entity of the city council. It's an administrative board.
Yes.
When I raised that point to the board members, and maybe this is some board training that needs to be done because this has caused, again, it's personal stress because of a relationship that is not bad, I indicated that the CPC board is an administrative board. It is a, it is an element of the administration. And yet, there was a sense that it was us and them, that the CPC board was, was one thing and the city administration was another thing. The CPC members, board members, that are administrators of a budget that is a budget of city taxpayers, of city tax money. Is that not true?
Yes, that's correct, Counselor.
So, you know, I think, you know, and we'll, we'll hope that these wounds and these wrinkles and relationships will be able to be resolved, but I do think that there is, there is justification for members of the CPC board to be upset, that the city is not, the city separate from the CPC, is not a contributing entity to resolving this problem. About 100% of the funds to resolve this problem are being requested out of the CPC budget. And it's reducing the CPC budget from close to $500,000, I think Ms. Dennis said, down to now $150,000 approximately. That's a big chunk of a rather limited budget that CPC has. And there will be other preservation efforts, open space efforts. We were talking about one today. $160,000, was it, for Maplewood Park?
Yes.
There's not enough money in the CPC. If we wanted to go to, say, can we get some emergency money to buy those lots? This $350,000 is going to take so much money out of the CPC budget that it's going to close the door to other options of its use, including the Maplewood project. So, and the Maplewood project, I don't see as being something that could be used as a maintenance budget or a capital, maybe a capital budget it could be, but it just doesn't seem to be good public policy, what we did with this, on this project. And again, I hesitate. I'll, I'll take the lead of my colleagues if they want to, want to take a direction that's other than adopting this tonight. My inclination is, even though it's, it's been bad public policy, that maybe we should be adopting it tonight because to delay any further is going to cause more havoc and more damage and probably result in a higher cost if we don't address it sooner because delayed action is usually more expensive action. But I'm not happy with the way this has gone, and I'm willing to consider an alternative to adopting this tonight just because I think the administration has significantly failed in doing the right thing on addressing this issue.
Well, just one final comment, then, I guess, Counselor. To the extent that the CPC board is an administrative board, and I was in agreement with you with that characterization, they have reviewed the project. They made a recommendation to fund the project. Requests came from them to the administration to initiate this transfer. So that, that body has supported the project and in deference to all of the work that they do expend on behalf of their deliberation and their consideration of the projects before them, they've made a decision, and it would be, I think, appropriate to respect that decision and support it.
I, I think they made that decision a little bit under, is duress, is the right word?
Not, certainly not from the administration, Counselor.
Well, just the circumstance and how many people are coming before them. I saw Jim Gibney, as chairman of the board, a very longtime friend of mine, chairman, or vice chairman of the Board of Library Trustees, pleading with this group. I saw Chris Gallagher presenting a case. I saw Leanne Vervel, who's been with the library for a very long time and highly regarded in her service to the community. All of them putting the CPC board sort of up against the wall, saying, "We need you to approve this." And then I saw the CPC board with great reluctance approving it. You're right, they did approve it. Sometimes decisions are tough to make. They made a tough decision. They made it unanimously. I don't think there was any opposition. And so it is before, as is the unanimous vote of the CPC board. So your point is well taken, Mrs. Viveras, and, and that gives me the inclination to support this tonight in spite of what I see as not good public policy. And with that, I yield Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman in seat two, Councilor Kamara.
My question is.
Thank you, Councilman in seat five, Council vice president LaBeau.
How much money do we have in the pay as we throw the revenue account? Is it the 1-1, looking at the second quarter update? And what is that hesitation to use any of the funds from this account? Why would we go to the CPC when we have money sitting in this account?
Well, again, Counselor, when, when we looked at it, the reserve we were anticipating would be used for operating expenses, and the snow and ice was identified as a potential use of that funds, that would certainly avoid us to having to raise it for the next fiscal year, whereas this item was a capital item, and so we felt that the capital revenue source would be more appropriate.
How many times has, has the city gone in front of the CPC and asked them for emergency funds for building?
This may be the first time.
They went to the Amory?
We, we, I think that we had an emergency for the Amory.
Did we have an emergency for the Amory?
It was requested at the Amory.
You could be correcting. Did the vet center come as an emergency? I'm not sure.
No.
I can look that up. We have that information, but I can look that information up for you.
I agree, my colleagues in seats one and three. I can imagine that nobody wants to see the, the library roof leaking, and the board voted unanimously to, to spend this money as an emergency project. I agree with that, but I, when we have money sitting in this reserve fund that possible we're not going to be using for snow and ice, I know it's, we still have a month or so left, but. I don't like to see this used in this way without any other way, or going for them and asking for the whole amount. I don't think that's fair. I don't think the CPC should use, be used as the city's emergency building repair fund. I would support moving it over from the reserve fund or any, any other suggestions that the council might have. That I yield.
Thank you. Anything further? Councilman in seat one, Councilor Kilby.
Thank you. I just wanted to, I mean, I can appreciate the statement that we should respect what boards have voted on, and it was unanimous. I didn't get to watch the meeting, so I will ask some, some questions, but again, I, I think the devil's in the details, right? So to my colleague in seat three, I think he's, he's pretty accurate. I mean, if, if you've got a roof that's leaking on a beautiful building, and you've got all that investment in there, right, all those resources that obviously can have significant water damage and be rendered useless, and then you've got some significant investment that you're going to have to do to kind of get those back into and repurchase them, and some things that may never be able to, to be duplicated again, I can understand them going there. But then the other piece was, did the board have all the information at hand? Do they, they know that we have $555,598 in active funds? Does, do they know that we had $1.3 million in the reserve account in the operating budget? I'm sure, I'm sure they knew we had a stabilization account, right? I mean, so.
They did.
Right, so, so that required a transfer, but I mean, we've, we've got access here. So, you know, you, you've got a group of individuals that are trying to save the building. You've got city employees that are trying to do this because they're being told that this is the route we're going to go in, but I mean, we've, we've got revenue here. So, I mean, if that was presented to the board, and I'm not sure if you can speak on behalf of the board, if the board knew that information, and if that changes the dynamics of everything?
So we actually had Ms. Viveras come down and speak for us because we did ask what the funding opportunities were. We are familiar with the stabilization fund, and I think Ms. Viveras suggested that there really weren't any other options to fund this project.
Okay, so we do have it, and I know you, I know you said you're a little hesitant because you didn't want to raise snow and ice, right? I mean, but at the end of the day, don't we do that with net school spending? If we don't meet net school spending, we're required to go ahead and do it for the next year. I mean, we could potentially, and I know it's early, healthcare, you know, we're not, we may not meet net school spending. We might be $1.2 million. We're going to roll that over into next year. I mean.
We may have to meet that by virtue of a transfer, Counselor.
We may, but you have money in the healthcare account.
But again, we may have to do a transfer as well.
Yeah, so you, you'd have to do a transfer, and the mayor's committing to 101% of net school spending next year, again, appealing to people's emotions to budget that. So that's, that's, that's an additional $2.3 million that we're not worried to, to move over, but $375,000 for a library that we have in the operating budget. I'm not quite sure why we don't address that. So I will not be supporting this. I will be urging the administration to come back down before this council with a request to transfer the amount that's necessary, but I'm not sure that, I mean, I didn't look at the entire detail. I mean, is the $375,000 that's required, is there, is there work that can be done internally, or are we just outsourcing all the work that's been associated? And I apologize, I didn't, I didn't look at any of the minutes from the CPC. I, I didn't watch the meeting, so if this information has been asked or answered, I apologize for that, but.
It actually, Counselor, I believe the original request might have been approximately $350,000, and the CPC added an additional $25,000 to do painting, interior, which in fairness, yes, we have painters, but given the structure and the access issues and the nature of the internal, you know, amenities, they felt it was probably best to hire someone to do that. Although I don't want to speak for them, Mr. Soul wants to comment further, but I understand that they did it in, in hopes of getting the work and the painting work done by someone who is trained to deal with these kinds of structures.
Just for the record, it was actually the administration's application that brought it up to 375. It wasn't our recommendation to increase the budget.
But I thought, Mr., one of your members may have, okay, we won't, we'll stop. We'll stop.
Okay. So I will not be supporting it, not because I don't want to fix the roof, because I think we should fix the roof. And quite frankly, if it was an emergency, I think we should have did this a long time ago. I mean, we've got the funds there, so.
Counselor, we can dispose of the motion after we vote on it, but if you want to make a motion, if you want to make a motion to order the administration to prepare an order, taking it out of stabilization, we're more than happy to do so because it seems, from a couple counselors' perspective, that's my, that might be where they're going.
And I'd like to dispose of the motion that's on the floor first.
No problem. I just wanted to let you know the options.
I speak to the motion.
Absolutely. Councilman in seat four, Councilor Kilby.
Thank you, Mr. President. In light of the conversation and the information that I just received, I'm, I'm going to withdraw that motion that I made.
Your adoption of the motion
Yes.
Has been withdrawn from colleague in seat four. Is there another motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we order the administration to come back before the city council with a transfer from the reserve account in the operating budget, so the FY19 reserve funds, with a request to transfer $375,050 to the building, is it building maintenance, building department, whatever the appropriate department name is.
Madam Clerk, if you could reiterate that motion, and then I'll entertain a second if it's so desired, if you have it. Counselor, one more time for the clerks.
That we order the administration to come back with an appropriation of $375,000, $375,050 from the FY19 reserve account to the building expense account.
Point of information, Mr. President.
Motion has been made by Councilor Kilby, seconded by Councilor Kilby. Discussion on the motion, Councilman in seat two, Councilor Kamara.
I think, first of all, I'm not sure that we can order the administration to do that. I feel a lot more comfortable if we requested the administration, administration to do that. I don't want to be issuing orders as an executive body to the administrative body.
Well, I'd make that amendment. Even if we ordered it, he wouldn't follow it anyways, so I'll make it in the form of a request.
As a form of a motion.
Is there a way, if we did use the CPA money for this, and we trim it and transfer from the reserve account to CPA fund, or we can't, we can't transfer money into the reserve account? Sand and shape your head now, but.
I don't think so, but we can look into it.
Here's the only problem I have with it. When, when I listened and I looked at and I read it, when, when you realize that Jim Gibney, who was pleading for the roof to get fixed, and Leanne, who was running that building and does an excellent job, is pleading for that building to get fixed, and we are at the middle of the winter, and half the reference department room, I believe, is not being used because it's damaged, and other rooms in that building are not being used to full potential because water damage. I think that, I don't know how long this is going to take before we authorize this and take care of it, because it's wintertime, and if they're going to make repairs, they have to do it very soon. Every day that we wait, there's a possibility of a storm or something happening, and it's just going to cause more damage to that building. So the quicker you can stop a roof leak, the better off you are. If not, it can get a lot more expensive than the $25,000 you're talking about, the repairs. The walls are already falling apart. Sheetrock is already crumbling, so there, there's significant damage that's occurring right now. I certainly understand my colleagues' request, and I have to say, I agree with them, but at this late point in time, I'm not sure that we have a choice to go back and make that request now, which we probably just issue the funding and show our displeasure and take it from that aspect. So I don't, I'm not going to be voting against it because I think it's the right thing to do to fix it. Maybe the process could have been handled differently, but that's the situation we're in, when there's no communication and there's no cooperation. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Councilman in seat three, Councilor Kamara.
Yeah, I, I share my colleague in seat two's perspective that to delay this for two more weeks, I believe we'll be gathering again two weeks from tonight.
Yep.
It might be, and then there'll be some time necessary beyond that, and as was pointed out earlier, we're not through with winter yet, so there likely will be some snowstorms or rainstorms or any, any other kinds of things that will exacerbate this problem. So I guess it's a question whether or not we can do this, and I, I want to also commend my colleague in seat two for pointing out that it's not the council's position to order the administration. I think we've learned that in the past from many other issues and, and direction from our cooperation council, that the council does not have that role to order. So changing it to a request covers that, but.
Correct.
Does the council have the opportunity tonight to amend the appropriation order so that we could, in that sense, amend it, that rather than it read to be appropriated from the CPA fund, that we amended and adopted with the amendment that, that this $375,050 be appropriated, be appropriated from funds other than CPA funds, and let the administration then take that amended order and act on it and find those appropriate funds?
Point of information, if I.
Councilman in seat one, your point of information.
Just while there, trying to research that question. Have you folks done all your due diligence? So do you have all the architectural drawings and documents? Are you ready? Is this project essentially shovel-ready?
We've actually identified an architect. The architect has not proceeded because absent funding.
So, I mean, it's not like it's going to happen tomorrow, so if, if there's concern about timing, this, they still need to get architectural services and drawings. You can do that. You can, you can get an architect for $10,000 or, you know, $20,000, which should be available in his budget, and then come back in two weeks for an appropriation and make the transfer.
I don't know that we're planning to do anything until the funding has been identified.
Councilman in seat three.
Yeah, so, so to go back, so my question is, and I don't know if the clerk wants to, wants to opine on that question, or she wants maybe cooperation council to opine on the question.
What question?
The question about whether we could amend the order to seek the funding from, and we could either specify from the stabilization fund.
Well, there's no order. You're talking about the, the resolution that has been made by Councilor, because you?
No, I'm talking about the appropriation.
Oh, the current order.
Before, as item number three.
Okay.
That rather than it read to be appropriated from CPA funds, that we, we amended to delete any reference to CPA funds and insert either other government funds, or we specify specifically, if the council wants to specify stabilization funds or reserve account. So I guess the first question is, can we even amend the order?
I don't think so. I, I would say no. The mayor signed the, signed the order, sent it to the city council. I don't think it would be appropriate. Madam Clerk, you happy to weigh in?
Cooperation council can correct me if I'm wrong, but only the mayor has the ability to identify where the spending is within his budget. This is the mayor's budget.
Can we ask cooperation council to?
Sure. We've already waived the rules. Attorney Macy? Come on down. Come on down. I want to remind the council, and I know Mrs. Sahadi and Mrs. Veris indicate, I know this, but we are sitting, prior to this meeting tonight, over $555,000 sitting in our idle capital projects that are unused at this time. So I just want to remind the council and the administration that there are capital projects that are sitting idle that could also be used, if appropriate. Attorney Macy?
So Counselor Macy, what I'm asking is, can the council amend the appropriation order that was forwarded to us by the mayor?
Well, tonight's answer is, I don't think so. Now, it's a little more complicated than that, I think, because you're dealing with CPA funds, you're dealing with the precept that the council can reduce appropriations, but not increase them. And now, what you're suggesting is kind of a change of the appropriation. And the straight answer is, I'm not sure, tonight at quarter nine, that I can give you an answer that would be binding.
So let me ask you this, though. If, in the absence of doing what is currently on the floor, if we did amend the appropriation order and then forward it to the mayor as amended, wouldn't he then be able to either accept the order as amended or reject the order as amended?
Well, yeah, he could...
Just a reminder...
Same thing as if you accept it now, he can accept it.
Just a reminder, there is no current, with respect to this appropriation order, any motion before this council for consideration at this point. So we can have this discussion all we want, but we can't amend an order that we don't have a motion on at this point. There's a resolution that's been mentioned by Consul in seat one, it's been seconded, that's supposed to be for us right now, not the appropriation order.
Right. But in speaking to the motion that is before us, if, in essence, I'm arguing that we reject the motion that's before us with the idea that we then would then consider an amended order.
Oh, no, I understand. I'm not saying it's not an appropriate conversation, I just wanted to remind you that we're not speaking of the appropriation order.
So to speak to the order that's before us, I'm not inclined to delay this for additional period of time, but I would be inclined to amend the appropriation. So I will vote against the motion that's before us, but not because I don't want to see an alternative to what's before us.
Got you. Thank you. Consul in seat one, Counselor Kadeem.
Thank you. I just got a question. I know the administration doesn't want to move forward with architectural services until funding's available, but under the facilities budget, we have a line item of $100,000 for... Sorry, I'm going to read the notes, I just actually, oh, here it is. Other professional services, architectural and engineering, as well as carpenter and roof contractors. So we've got, in the second quarter report that we had, it looks like that we've got an encumbrance of $93,000, only $23,000 has been spent, so, and there was a transfer or adjustments of $21,000 that were made. So I'm assuming that we just probably tied up a purchase order associated with that for architectural services and things of that nature.
Counselor, I can't honestly answer. I don't know what, I know Mr. Gallagher has a number of projects underway, not the least of which are some of the handicap counter work that's ongoing. I don't know how he has that committed at this point. I couldn't answer that for you.
All right. I don't know how much more frustrated I could possibly be. I mean, we've got projects, we haven't looked at our operating budget, we don't know what we have assigned in facilities expenses, what he has encumbrances, we don't know what money's available.
I'm sure he does, Counselor, but I don't know that tonight.
So why don't you know that? You've come down here before us, you're the administration. How do you not have, this comes back to the question about, are we operating in a vacuum or are we working as a team? That was, this is the reason for my questioning. Every step of the way, it's like, we don't know, we don't know, we haven't done this, we haven't done this. It's frustrating.
Counselor, if you had contacted us in advance of the meeting, I'd have been happy to have gotten that information for you.
On the motion, Madam Clerk, roll call. If you could read the motion, the resolution, that is before the city council again.
This would be resolved that the administration return to the city council with an appropriation of $375,050 from the FY-2019 reserve account to the facilities maintenance account.
Would it be appropriate to maybe refer this, because it's such an important issue, to also have this discussion in the committee on finance at the next city council meeting? Is that the will of the council? Want to do that?
Yes.
Because we've talked about the urgency of this all night, so.
Mr. Gallagher, yes.
It's up to the council. I can't make a motion, the chair, so. Hearing none? Roll call on the resolution before us, Madam Clerk.
Can you read it one more time? I apologize.
Yes. Be it resolved that the administration return to the city council with an appropriation of $375,050 from the FY-2019 reserve account to the facilities maintenance account.
I'd like to amend the motion to also include that it go to Finance Committee and that we at least have Chris Gallagher here, who's the director of that department...
At the next forum.
To be here to answer questions. I mean, God forbid that we have a department head here to answer questions about a project that we have. Just going to say, unless he's here in the audience.
Counselor, he would have been here, but he had a, an issue that had to be addressed.
The city council is...
And I'm not going to discuss his personal business, but I trust you...
We couldn't have anybody else that could answer the questions for us?
Counselor, had you contacted us in advance? We offer for briefings.
Have you contacted us in advance? Are you kidding me? How about the administration provide us with the information and be prepared to answer questions? That is on the agenda, that has been put forth to this council by the administration. Is that too much to ask?
No, Counselor, but what you have before you is a request, and we had no idea that you were going to go off into Mr. Gallagher's budget, but we'll be happy to have that information for you in the future.
The administration takes the city council as number one, as a rubber stamp and as a joke. You do not take us seriously. The city council does not hold you accountable to make sure that we don't get treated the way we're being treated, to make sure that we don't have department heads that are absent. We had the school department individuals here for the last two meetings that sat in these, in the audience, for the entire meeting.
Mr. President, point of order.
Point of order.
I believe there was a motion to call a question, which means no more debate.
Thanks. There was also an amendment to the resolution. So the amendment, Madam Clerk, can you read the resolution? Consul in seat two.
Thank you. If by chance we realize that they need to do the roof repairs immediately, would you be able to hold a special meeting?
I'd be happy to poll the council.
You know, because sooner, before you said, at the next scheduled meeting, I don't want to wait two weeks. If this is in crisis, and if we can find out tomorrow whether or not he's willing to cooperate, and if he's not, I don't want to make the library board wait till the next regular meeting.
Fair enough.
And wait two weeks. We have a emergency meeting, I think it's fair enough.
Fair enough. If, I would rise that to the point of emergency. If we can get a quorum, I'd be happy to do that, Counselor.
Point of order.
Consul in seat five.
This is for a complete new roof. The repair is for the damages to the interior. So they're not saying they're going to repair, make further repairs to the current roof. This is for a complete new roof.
Right.
That's correct.
I don't want to delay the process one day.
Consul in seat two, you have a floor. You yield, Counselor?
Yes, I do, thank you.
Okay, anything further from the council? Madam Clerk, one last time, if you could read the resolution before the council.
Be it resolved that the administration return to the city council with an appropriation of $375,050 from the FY-2019 reserve account to the facilities maintenance account, and be it further resolved that a discussion be held at the next meeting of the committee on finance with the director of facilities maintenance participating in the discussion.
The motion, Consul in seat two, on the motion.
After listening to it again, maybe we should also, I'd like to amend it so that if it doesn't come from the reserve account, come from a number of accounts, any account, combined accounts, whatever way you want to put it there, so that we get the funding on the CPA grant funds.
So a motion to amend, Counselor, to have the administration look at an alternative location where they could find the revenue to make the...
If the reserve account is fine, that's one thing. If not, then look at other alternatives as well. There's a number of different accounts we can use, we talked about.
Let it be further resolved, Madam, let it further be resolved, Madam Clerk, that you want to read that once again?
If I may just, as a point of parliamentary inquiry...
Sure. Consul in seat three.
I think what, and I concur with what my colleague in seat two is saying, that we just amended to have, to read reserve or other accounts. So just those few words, reserve or other accounts.
On the amendment to the amended resolution? There's a motion that has been made by Counselor Kamara, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Stephen Kamara, discussion on the amendment of the amendment of the resolution. We are going to, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. That was just the motion to amend. We're going to adopt as amended at this point, Madam Clerk. You want to read the resolution again, please? As amended?
Be it resolved that the administration return to the city council with an appropriation of $375,050 from the FY-2019 reserve account or alternative account to the facilities maintenance account, and be it further resolved that a discussion be held at the next meeting of the committee on finance with the director of facilities maintenance participating in the discussion.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. President.
It would be appropriate for the council to take action on the appropriation order, whether it's a table or a given leave to withdraw. Is there a...
Could we move to refer it back to Finance Committee?
Motion to refer to the appropriation order to the committee on finance has been made by Counselor Stephen Kamara, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Kilby, discussion? Sure, the appropriation order that we've been discussing, we have to take action on the appropriation order that was sent to us, so we can either give it leave to withdraw or refer it, or whatever the council wants to do. There's a motion on the floor now, Counselor, to refer the order to the committee on finance.
And that's the CPC fund.
That's correct.
Okay. So we can, if we so choose, vote that way in Finance, that what we're doing.
Right. Well, I'll make sure at the next meeting that we have this, I'll have both of those items on our agenda for action. Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion on the, Consul in seat three?
Yeah, just, you made the point, but I just reiterated that the reason for doing that is to keep this alive if it ends up being the only route that we could travel. In that way, putting it in Finance, when we meet in Finance, we'll have hopefully a response to our eight-to-zero motion that we just adopted, and this original appropriation, so that we can hopefully resolve it one way or another.
Fair enough. Thank you, Counselor. Motion has been made to refer to the committee on finance, has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item number four is a communication from the mayor requesting an easement over city property for Eric and Carol Lepage on the south side of 439 Martine Street.
Motion to refer to the committee on real estate has been made by Counselor Kilby, is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Pelletier, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item number five is a communication from the mayor and a request to transfer $160,000 from the Morton Middle School inactive fund to the Maplewood Park acquisition.
Move to transfer the appropriation?
Motion to adopt the, is that what you're saying?
To adopt.
Motion to adopt the transfer of Morton Middle School inactive fund to the Maplewood Park acquisition fund has been made by Counselor Stephen Kamara, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Pelletier, discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call.
On adoption of the financial order, Counselor Kadeem.
Yes, hold on, one second, Madam Clerk. Consul in seat two? In Finance, yes. It was discussed in Finance, but there was a motion, I had to entertain it. Would you like to... Motion to refer to the committee on real estate takes precedence. Consul in seat two has been made, seconded by Counselor Kilby in seat four, has been made. Any discussion on the motion to refer to the real estate committee? Consul in seat three, Counselor Kamara.
My feeling is referring it to real estate is going to jeopardize our moving forward on this. The property owner has a tentative agreement to sell this property to a private developer. If the city doesn't act on this now, I think we jeopardize this being transferred to the city for the purpose of keeping it as open space. So I hope this motion to refer will be defeated and that we adopt the appropriation.
Thank you. Counselor, you yield?
I'd like to...
Counselor, you yield? Do you yield?
I yield, yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Consul in seat four, Counselor.
I'd like to amend the motion.
Consul in seat one, your amendment.
I'd like to add that we also, at the next council meeting, hold an executive session with Corporation Council to discuss strategy session in regards to purchase of lands, whatever the section, subsection is, I can get that for you, but it's one of the...
There's a motion on the floor by Counselor Kadeem to, at the next scheduled city council meeting, hold an executive session with, for the purposes of discussing the strategy with respect to the purchase and sales of these two lots. Has been made by Counselor Kadeem, is there a second?
Is that being offered as an amendment to my colleague in seat two's?
Yes.
It is. That's the amendment, so on the amendment, is there any discussion?
A motion to refer is now going to motion to amend.
There's a motion to refer, and he's amending the motion to refer to also, say, to have an executive session meeting at the next scheduled city council meeting. There's a motion on the floor, I'm going to entertain it. It's been made. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Council Vice President Lebovny, discussion? Consul in seat two, Counselor Kamara.
Yeah, this doesn't need to get complicated. Honestly, it's very simple. The only reason I made the motion for it to the real estate committee is so that we could have people incorporated here, and I was hoping that the committee would take place relatively soon. I don't want to jeopardize the project. I think that it's a good project, I think that we should take it, and people are discussing whether or not we can get it for a little bit cheaper. I don't believe so, but if you hear it from People Inc. that they're willing to give us the option to buy it, it's not going to be any cheaper, maybe it would satisfy the minds of some of my colleagues. So I don't believe we need to go into executive session. I've never been in an executive session, and this council, I know the school committee works that way, and they have reasons for it, I understand that. We don't. Whatever we do here should be in public. If we're going to have a discussion, we should do it privately in the Corporation Council's office, if you feel that way. But to come out and say, we're going to have an executive session to discuss strategies and negotiating for real estate, that People Inc. by saying there's no negotiations, it's $80,000 from him or $80,000 from you, take it or leave it, it doesn't matter. It's a very simple process. It doesn't need to be complicated, convoluted. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Consul in seat seven, Counselor Pelletier.
You know, I agree, it should go to my committee on real estate. Let's get it done, I'll get it done as soon as we can. Bring them in, let's see what they want to do. I mean, they may want to just sell to us, and we get the money up, or, we're going to see what they're going to say, that's all we pay. So we're going to send it to the committee on real estate.
Thank you, Counselor. On the amendment that's before us, any further discussion? Consul in seat one.
Thank you. I just want to, just because we've got this mindset, because we've never done anything before, we shouldn't do it, right? There's 10 reasons to go into executive session. One of them is for the negotiation strategy for purchasing land. That's allowable under the 10 reasons for going into executive session. Why we would ask People Incorporated to come down and then start negotiating with them at the floor and give away our strategy does not make any sense. We could get it less than $160,000. And if People Incorporated wants to sell it, they would have already sold it, okay? They sold the other lots, they obviously came to us to sell this for a reason, obviously having a difficult time selling it. So why are we going to pay market value for this property? But, again, it's never been done before, so let's not do it. I yield.
On the amendment, anything further? Consul in seat four, Counselor Kilby.
Thank you for recognizing, Mr. President. No, I agree with Counselor Kadeem. I mean, let's not forget, People Incorporated's a nonprofit. They were almost, say, they were partner in government. They benefit from city resources, police and fire and the like. You know, I would consider this maybe almost like a pilot. Maybe it should be a gift to the city. I don't know what they, I asked earlier, I don't know what they what they purchased it from, from the diocese. I'd like to know that. And I think it's minimal risk, if any, that they'd go off and sell it to a private entity for the same consideration. I think they owe the city to at least sit down and talk to us about the purchase of this property, so I yield.
Thank you. On the amendment for executive session, that has been made and seconded. Anything further on that amendment? Counselor in seat five. Council Vice President Lebo.
Can you just read that, please?
Madam Clerk?
The amendment is that the next meeting, at the next meeting, that the city council hold an executive session to discuss strategy with respect to purchase and sale of two lots.
Motion has been made, on the amendment has been made and seconded. All those in favor? Let's do a roll call.
Roll call on amendment.
Roll call on the amendment?
Just get a point of clarification. So the amendment to the amendment, so it's going to be sending it to real estate and also to finance. So real estate could happen-
Nope. Real estate and executive session.
In finance, at the next meeting.
Would be, I would have to check with Corporation Council, Madam Clerk.
Full council.
Full council.
Executive session has to be in full council.
Executive session in full council, so.
At the next meeting.
Uh huh.
So finance could, I mean, real estate could already have, will have already met and possibly come up with a decision, correct?
It's possible. It's going to be up to the chair.
We haven't voted on that yet.
She's just asking for a point of clarification. On the amendment, Madam Clerk, one more time if you could read that, so there's no confusion.
The amendment is that at the next meeting, the city council will hold executive session to discuss strategy with respect to purchase and sale of two lots.
On the amendment, roll call.
Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Joseph Kamara?
Guess it's the first time for everything. Yes.
Stephen Kamara?
No.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lullaby Lebo?
Yes.
Long? Pelletier?
No.
Viveras?
Yes.
And President Panti?
Yes.
On the motion to refer to the real estate committee, as amended, is there a motion?
Motion to send it to the committee.
Motion has been made by Counselor Pelletier. Is there a second?
Second.
Seceded by Council Vice President Lebo. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Point of information.
Counselor in seat three.
So in essence, is the council considering an action that would refer this to full council to go into executive session as well as to refer it to real estate to be discussed in public session? Is that what the intent of the council is if this is adopted?
Say that again.
We just adopted by a six to two vote to refer this to full council and to go into executive session to have a discussion concerning this matter.
Yep.
Now, there's a motion to refer it to real estate to have a discussion on this matter in public session. I feel like one or the other, and since we've just done one, I think it would be appropriate for this item to be given leave to withdraw.
I withdraw the motion.
You withdraw your motion to do what?
Refer to real estate.
Excuse me?
To refer it to real estate.
Motion has been withdrawn to refer to real estate. There's no motion to refer to the real estate committee at this point unless I am hearing one? Hearing none. There's only a motion to, for the full council to go in executive session to discuss strategy that has been made and already approved. Hearing no further action on this item?
Just one point of information.
Counselor in seat three?
It wasn't specify who would be present at this executive session. Shall I assume that people will be invited such as representatives from People Incorporated as well as city administration? Who's to make that-
Point of information.
Counselor in seat one, a point of information?
I did say with Corporation Council, so I mean, I know that wasn't part of the motion, but we want to invite People Incorporated to our negotiation strategy.
Right.
So we're not inviting People Incorporated to the discussion?
That's the reason for going into executive session.
Counselor, Counselor in seat three, you still have a floor. I don't, I mean, look, folks, folks, we've already-
It opens up another question and-
Well, right now, there's no motion before us, so we've all-
There may be one very soon.
Okay.
So it seems then that it may be appropriate to send to real estate, so that if there is a strategy that's determined in an executive session, which I didn't support, but if we go into executive session, executive session, and there is a strategy on the purchase of this property, it seems that that information should then be referred to real estate, and real estate should have a meeting to discuss it.
Are you going to second Counselor Pelletier's motion to refer to the real estate committee?
Yes.
Motion has been made by Counselor Stephen Kamara to second Counselor Pelletier's motion to refer to the real estate committee. Anything further? Hearing none. Roll call.
On referral to real estate, Counselors Kadeem?
To refer to real estate committee, well, I don't, I would just ask, I'm not going to amend the motion. I'm just going to ask the chairman to hold off on holding a real estate meeting until we have the executive session, just.
Thanks for your point of information. You have a point of information, Counselor? In seat seven?
I would be happy-
Counselor in seat seven, do you have a point of information?
You know, I just want to get this done. I mean, instead of my committee, maybe we can straighten it out one night. We don't need an executive session. We never had one. And I guess maybe we can start now.
We've already voted on it, so that's happened.
So I would just move, I seconded the motion-
You did, yes.
To refer it to real estate. I would ask to, I will amend it, the motion to amend that the real estate committee meeting be held after the executive session has done its due diligence.
On the amendment to, after the committee on finance has executive session, that the real estate committee meet has been made by Counselor Stephen Kamara. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seceded by Counselor Kilby. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Counselor in seat seven, opposed? The ayes have it. Motion to adopt as amended has been made by Counselor Stephen Kamara. Is there a second?
Second.
Seceded by Counselor Kilby. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor in seat seven, opposed. The ayes have it.
Item number six is a communication from the mayor and a collective bargaining agreement for the APSME EMS unit.
To adopt?
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Stephen Kamara on the APSME collective bargaining agreement that is before us has been made to adopt by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Stephen Kamara. Discussion on the adoption? Hearing none. Roll call. This is item six.
On adoption, Counselors Kadeem? Joseph Kamara?
Yes.
Stephen Kamara?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lullaby Lebo?
Yes.
Long? Pelletier?
Yes.
Viveras?
Yes.
President Panti?
Yes. Thank you.
Item number seven is a communication from the mayor and orders for land transfers for Greater Florida Development Corp. at Current Road and Sykes Road.
Motion to refer. Adopt the orders?
Motion to adopt the orders has been made by Counselor Stephen Kamara. Is there a second?
Second.
Seceded by Counselor Kilby. I just want to point my information on this. I'm not going to be supporting the adoption. I think it's appropriate due to the issues we've had in the past, so this gets referred to the real estate committee. But I, so I won't be supporting the adoption of this motion. There's a motion to adopt that has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
On adoption of the orders, Counselors Kadeem?
No.
Joseph Kamara?
Yes.
Stephen Kamara?
Yes.
Kilby? Lullaby Lebo?
No.
Long? Pelletier?
Yes.
Viveras?
Yes.
President Panti?
No. Motion carries?
Motion fails.
What is the motion? Did it pass or fail?
Four yeas, five nays. Excuse me, four yeas, three nays.
My math was off.
What is it? Four yeas or passes, correct? Thank you. Next item on the agenda, that is the adoption that has been passed.
I failed to adopt, right?
No, we adopted, correct?
I believe the charter requires five votes for anything to be adopted.
You have four. You don't have five.
Do you want to recess or wait for Counselor Kilby to get back?
Is he coming back?
Yeah.
Motion to refer to real estate.
Motion to refer to real estate has been made by Counselor Kadeem, seconded by Council Vice President Lebo. Discussion? Is there something that's that funny? I don't think so.
President.
Motion has been made to refer to the real estate committee, has been made and seconded. Thanks, Counsel. I'll control the chamber. Motion has been made to refer to the real estate committee and seconded. Anything further? Roll call on referral to the real estate committee.
On referral, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Joseph Kamara?
Yes.
Stephen Kamara?
Yes.
Kilby? Lullaby Lebo?
Yes.
Long? Pelletier?
Yes.
Viveras?
Yes.
President Panti?
Yes. Motion to refer to the real estate committee. Next order of business.
Item number eight is a request from the mayor on behalf of the police department requesting a salary amendment for the accreditation coordinate-
To refer to ordinance committee?
Motion to refer to the committee on ordinance has been made by Counselor Stephen Kamara. Is there a second?
Second.
Seceded by Counselor Kadeem. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item nine is a request from the city engineer to, for an emergency street opening in a pavement less than five years old on Purchase Street.
Move to committee on public works and transportation.
Motion to refer to the committee on public works and transportation has been made by Counselor Stephen Kamara. Is there a second?
I'll second that with discussion.
Seceded by Counselor in seat one. Discussion, Counselor in seat one. Counselor Kadeem.
I appreciate the referral to, was it public works? I wouldn't know, but I mean, the road opening already took place, right? Is that what-
It's been done.
So I guess I got a concern. What was, we get a, we get a letter from the city engineer telling us that we have an emergency. We don't, number one, again, lack of information to the city council. We don't know what the emergency work is. I mean, what are we going to discuss? The fact that the city council was not told about an emergency work that, on a road that was just paved? I mean, there's another one that I want to talk about when it comes up. I mean, this is just absolutely needs to stop. I've said this before. You know, our infrastructure is probably the worst that I've seen in a very, very long time. We pave our roads. We allow, you know, the gas company, utilities, the electric company, now, was it? Verizon coming in to do emergency work? I'm not, I'm not even sure.
But it doesn't, Counsel, just for your information, it doesn't necessarily say in the memo to us that Verizon's doing the work. It just says the trench is within limits of Verizon, so I'm too unsure exactly what the repair is.
Says an emergency street opening for utility repairs was executed by the company on or about January 20th. We're in February. Work's already done.
So has the work been done?
Yes.
Yeah, it's just-
Okay.
Point of information.
Counselor in seat three, point of information?
I can provide some information on this since this is on the block where I've lived. Four days, four days after the completion of the Purchase Street streetscape project, Verizon discovered that there was a broken line under the newly paved street that was affecting internet access on Pleasant Street. They determined that the broken line was in front of 235 Purchase Street. Subsequent to that, no, excuse me, it was in the same, in the vicinity of that area. Subsequent to that, National Grid, on one of those freezing days that we had on a weekend, discovered that there was a break preventing, preventing heat at a particular property. This is addressed here, 235 Purchase Street, which is across the street from my property. So National Grid ripped up the same spot that Verizon had ripped up. So there were two cuts, so now we're cut on top of a cut, and the job of repair deserves the attention because there's a bump, there were two bumps, and there's now two more bumps within the two bumps. So this issue-
Thanks to your point of information, Counsel. Counselor in seat one?
I respect that. So now what we're going to have is, because we're in the middle of winter, we're going to have a trench that's been fixed. We've got to wait for it to settle. They're going to come back, because there's going to be a temporary repair. It's like the rest of the roads in the city of Florida. I mean, just drive every street that we have here. You are hitting trench after trench after trench, and we've got no bond, right? No bond on this, that Verizon is going to own the work that we have just paid. I don't know, how much was it? $2 million for streetscapes? That, I mean, I don't know. And we've got another one that's coming up, so the fact that we weren't even notified if there was an emergency was four days after, and I mean, we should have at least gotten some type of notification that we've got a company coming in to open up our roadways that are under moratorium, for us to continuously allow for these types of things to take place. I mean, internet access, I don't know that internet access is an emergency, to be quite honest. We can make that determination, but I think it should have come to the city council for approval to open up the roadway. That's just my take on this whole situation. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Yeah, $1.3 million streetscape project. Anything further? Madam Clerk, can you reiterate what the motion is, the point? Motion has been-
Refer to public works.
Motion to refer to public works has been made by Counselor Stephen Kamara, is seconded by Counselor Kadeem. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Committee on Public Works and Transportation, at a meeting held on January 30th, voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying communication be accepted and placed on file. This is the pavement management system.
Motion to accept and place on file has been made by Counselor Joseph Kamara, seconded by-
Second.
Counselor Viveras. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Committee on Public Works and Transportation, at a meeting held on January 30th, voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying communication be approved. This is a request from the city engineer to open a street less than five years old at 471 Center Street.
Motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Joseph Kamara. Is there a second?
Second.
Seceded by Counselor Pelletier. Is there any discussion? Counselor in seat one. Counselor Kadeem?
Again, less than one year old. I don't even know how much that street cost, but, and I understand, but again, we're just opening up a roadway. And when you start looking at it, it's because there's a change of use and variance. I mean, everybody gets notification well in advance to the roadwork being done. There should have, had been some discussion. I want to, I'll approve it, because that's what the council's going to do, but I want to make an amendment to the motion that we approve it with a requirement of a $50,000 bond to be held for that roadway for the next 10 years, which is when the moratorium ends. If there's any roadwork that needs to be repaired, that we either contact the company that was supposed to be fixing this and that it goes curb to curb, the repair goes curb to curb, and all the requirements are in place and that the $50,000 bond be held by the city. And if the vendor does not fix the roadway, that then we utilize the bonds to improve and fix that patchwork.
Quick question. The moratorium, is it 10 years, five?
It's a five years, but they should own it. I mean, the roadways are, should be good at least for 10 years. I mean, so if you want to, I can amend the bond for five years. I'll amend it for five years.
Is a motion made by Counselor Kadeem, seconded by Counselor Kilby? Discussion on that item? Counselor in seat two. Counselor Kamara.
Yeah, I think if we're going to put this into play, then what needs to do is create an ordinance that makes everyone hit it. It's not just this particular person.
Aye.
So I don't think it's fair to do it to this individual now and have him be the only person that's ever had to go through this. Like I said, I know this is the first time for anything. I think we need to get it right. I mean, if we're going to put this in place, let's put it, let's make it an ordinance, not just signal on this individual. There was a change of what the use was going to be, and that's what the necessary street openings for. With that, I yield.
Thank you. On the amendment that has been made and seconded, Counselor in seat two, four. Counselor Kilby.
I think Counselor Carver makes a good point. Counselor Kadeem with the resolution.
Well-
Have that go to ordinance of legislation?
Counselor, Counselor in seat one?
Thank you. I think we should do it now. We're not going to, and I think we should make the resolution to go to ordinance and make this a requirement moving forward. But I think, I think we should, we should do this immediately. With every project that comes before us, start enforcing it. We've got to enforce it somewhere, so why not start it now? This roadwork, this roadwork was done less than a year. Like, we've got two roads that we have already completely fixed, and they've already been cut in less than a year. I mean, it just does not make sense. And all we're asking them to do is if they want to do it, they've got to go get a bond and actually certify the workmanship of that road. And then we'll release the bond if we don't need to use it.
Thank you. Counselor in seat four, you still have the floor. No, you have the floor still. It's okay.
But I think it makes sense, which what Counselor Kadeem is saying, like I say, we can handle this case by case until an ordinance is in place. I think it makes total sense.
Are you going to be drafting a resolution to refer to the committee on finance, or are you, I mean, sorry, to the committee on ordinance legislation?
Yes, I could call it quick tomorrow.
Sure, fair enough. On the adoption, on the amendment that's before us, Counselor in seat two. Counselor Kamara.
Thank you. Listen, I mean, my colleague in seat four, I think he agreed with me, and he agreed with my colleague in seat one, and I understand that maybe he should be with both of us because we both make good valid points. The problem I'm having is that there's a reason that the council signs off on these, and as he just says, maybe we should handle these on an individual case until it gets to that point. That's why we get to vote on it. Depending on the severity of what's needed and depending on the urgency, this council has the, within itself, the authority to either deny these openings or approve these openings. I just don't think it's fair till we put on such stringent and $50,000 for a street opening on this individual when no one else has ever had to do that before. If we're going to do it, let's make people aware that that's what's going to happen. The reason that this council approves is, we've had people in the past who have bought property. The property was not gas. It was oil. And then the city put Plymouth Avenue, brand new Avenue, down to Plymouth Avenue. Then an elderly couple came and they wanted to get gas services. So what do we do? Deny them gas services because we have, we're going to make them come up with a $50,000 bond, a bond, so that they can get regular gas to their house? They didn't realize the city was going to put in a new road, and they didn't realize that they had to say, "Okay, if you're going to do that, let's cut in the road and put the gas services in." Now, they didn't own the property. The people who owned the property previously wasn't going to pay the expenses to- going to pay the expenses to convert their oil tankers to gas, so they says, we don't care. So if we're going to put this type of thing into place, let's hash it out in the ordinance committee to give reasons why it's beneficial or not beneficial, but it's within this, no one's saying that they're going to cut the street open. This council has the authority to approve that or not approve that, and that's where it is right now. It stands on a case per case basis. If you feel it's not warranted, vote against it, if you feel it's warranted, vote for it, but don't come up with these $50,000 rules that's going to apply from now on to people and without putting it in an ordinance, it's not fair to anyone. There's certain situations that this is valid, I don't like brand new streets getting open one year later, six months later, two years later, I don't like it at all. That's why we created this moratorium for five years. So it's within the preference of the council, let's not get a little carried away, I'm as frustrated as everyone else is, none of us like to open up these streets, but some of these times, sometimes it's unavoidable, you have no choice, and that's why we do it. With that I yield.
Thank you, Counselor in seat one, Counsel Kadeem.
I appreciate that, and, you know, I'll go back to the Plymouth Ave situation because I remember that vividly, I mean, again, an $8 million investment, within a year, we're cutting over, open the roads, like, how does that make any sense? As a council, we should be holding people accountable and protecting our, our investment in our infrastructure. We talk about infrastructure all the time, for gas, there are options, right? Unfortunately, as a council, we should have, sometimes we have to deliver bad news, but you have oil, you have propane, and you have gas, there is no emergency to get a gas boiler. You can get a gas boiler that has, you can get propane boiler that can be converted into gas very cheaply. So there are mechanisms around it, but we take the easy route and we say, okay, just cut into our roads, and then we've got potholes, and, you know, we're fixing it, we're patching it, and it's a mess, it's a mess, right? And $50,000, if they're, if they're confident in the workmanship that's being performed, that there's not going to be any settlement or any trench or any potholes or anything like that on a newly paved road, then $50,000 is not unrealistic, and to be quite honest, this is not, we wouldn't be the first community to stop putting bonds on, on any type of emergency road openings in terms of Massachusetts, I mean, it goes on, it happens, I mean, why, why, absolutely, I mean, if he wants it, he's requesting it, the homeowner should come up with it, I mean, that's part of the moratorium.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor in seat two, Counsel Kamara.
Thank you. Again, I mean, I know my colleague says he remembers the elderly couple, I don't, I don't think you're on the council, but then, the couple I'm talking about, this is an individual elderly couple who bought a piece of property or inherited a piece of property, and they want to convert to gas. They certainly could not come up with $50,000 to get gas.
Point of information, they're getting a bond, they're not coming up with $50,000, so it's just, it's an insurance policy to guarantee the work that's being done.
Thank you. Counselor in seat two, you have a floor.
With that I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat four, Counsel Kilby.
Yes, I just think it's quite simple, and I don't want to be redundant, but the ordinance can be framed that it's within the council's discretion to require the bond. So Counsel Kamara, seat two's, you know, with the elderly couple scenario, I mean, we would consider that and not impose the bond in that, in that situation. So case by case basis now, and when the ordinance is framed, we put that in there, that's within the council's discretion through a vote whether to initiate a bond or not. I yield.
Thank you, Counselor in seat five, Counsel Vice President LeBeau, and then we're going to wrap up.
The only comment with that is when we get something that's already been opened and we found out about it after the fact, we don't have an say in that case by case basis. I yield.
Good point. Your point of information, Counselor in seat one?
Yes, just in terms of fairness, when you look at Center Street, I don't know how many houses are on Center Street, but think about the individuals that have waited on Center Street, especially Center Street, which is a side street, to get their road paved, and then within less than a year, they're having a road cut, there's a trench that's being opened, and now they've got a trench that's being settled, they've got a pothole, they're back to where they are, like, how is that not protecting the other citizens and residents of that street? It's unfair to them.
Thank you for your point of information, Counselor in seat three, real quick.
As I understand it, the ordinance is, is already in effect, that there can be no cut on a road that has been constructed within the last five years, unless there's an emergency, and the emergency, there should not be a price tag attached to someone who had to have the street cut because they didn't have any heat, I mean, that's an emergency, I mean, so I think, I think the, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with referring this to ordinance committee, and they can iron it out, taking a look at the current ordinance, but to adopt anything at this point to require a bond on this developer or whoever it is that cut open Center Street, I think is just not an appropriate way to go, so. I'm happy, I think the motion is to refer this to the Committee on-
No, the motion that is before us is a motion to adopt with an amendment to the adoption that we impose the, the bond, that's what's before us right now, there's no refer-
Since this is already in ordinance, with an ordinance that exists that addresses this issue, that the whole matter that's before us now, we refer to the Committee on Ordinances, so I'll move to refer to Committee on Ordinances.
The entire item before-
This motion, referring this motion to the Committee on Ordinances.
Referring the motion to adopt what's currently before us with the amendment to impose the bond, be referred?
Send it all to ordinance committee.
Be referred to the Committee on Ordinances and Legislation has been made by Counsel Stephen Kamara, is there a second? So we won't be making any action tonight on this specific item, has been made by Counsel Stephen Kamara, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Counsel Kadeem, discussion, Counselor in seat one, Counsel Kadeem.
Just for clarifying purposes, I mean, I, we can't just, we just heard the argument on Purchase Street, that the original, even though we have ordinances, we had an emergency road opening for internet, and then it was the heat, all right? Nobody's arguing about the heat portion, but internet, like, I get there could potentially be some emergencies, but I mean, we're talking about Verizon having to go fix internet on Pleasant Street as an emergency to open up, opening up a road before the council had approval on it. So the ordinances didn't stop or prevent that.
Thank you, Counselor. On the referral to the Committee on Ordinance and Legislation that has been made and seconded, anything further? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Two opposed.
Seat two opposed. The ayes have it. Next order of business.
Whereas there has been an increase in violent crime in the city of Fall River causing many of our residents to feel unsafe, and whereas this increase in crime is causing residents and business owners to request a greater police presence throughout our city, and whereas the budget season for next fiscal year is approaching and budget discussions are beginning, now therefore be a resolve that the Committee on Public Safety convene with the Chief of Police and the Administration to discuss methods to increase police presence for public safety, increasing surveillance cameras, police walking beats, overtime, and other methods to increase public safety for our residents, and be a further resolve that the Committee on Public Safety hear directly from the Chief of Police his wish list for the next fiscal year budget.
Move to adopt the resolution.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counsel Stephen Kamara, seconded by Counsel Kilby, discussion, sponsor of the resolution, Counselor in seat four.
Just quickly, I would just ask if any of my colleagues have any issues, I mean, any specific items that they would like brought up, please communicate with me through email or otherwise, and I'll make sure that those, those issues are brought to the attention of the chief. I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Anything further? Hearing none on the adoption that has been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Whereas medical and recreational marijuana dispensaries have recently opened in the city of Fall River, and whereas these dispensaries are new to the city of Fall River and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, now therefore be resolved that the Committee on Ordinances and Legislation convene with Corporation Council, Chief of Police, and the Administration to discuss the possibility of limiting the number of licenses for medical and recreational marijuana dispensaries in the city of Fall River.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counsel Kadeem, seconded by Counsel Appellatier, discussion, sponsor of the resolution, Counselor in seat seven, Counsel Appellatier.
Thank you. It seems to me that the mayor is keeping this close to the chest, I don't know if any of my colleagues got any information about who's getting these letters, where these places are going to be here in the city of Fall River. I see three or four already, some are running, and we've got no information. There is a need for medical marijuana, I have friends that have to go to Brockton to get the medicine, whether it be the oil or the cream, and if people want the recreational